Hi Joanne, could we do a quick sound check?
Testing for sound.
Yep, good, thanks.
Hi Erin, it's Cheryl, can we do a quick sound check?
Testing one, two, three.
Thank you. Hi, Tool, it's Cheryl, can we do a quick sound check, please?
Testing one, two, three.
Perfect, thank you. Christian, can we do a quick sound check, please?
Hey Cheryl, Christian here.
Thank you. Danielle?
I want to say something funnier than that, but I have nothing on hand, so.
Bean?
Speaking of funny, don't forget November, everybody.
Hi Doug, it's Cheryl, can we do a quick sound check?
Test one, two, three.
Thank you. Everett?
Hola, dos, tres, cuatro, cinco.
Thanks. Joanne?
Hi Cheryl.
Thanks, Joanne. Hi Mike, can we do a quick sound check?
Test for myself.
One, two, three.
I didn't, I couldn't hear you, Mike, sorry.
Testing one, two, three.
Oh, perfect. Paul?
No one is going to beat Everett's sound check text, so I'm not even going to try.
Trevor? What about Steve? Louise? Stefan Graham, can we do a quick sound check, please? How about Stephen Bannerman, can we do a quick sound check, please?
Checking, one, two, three.
Thanks, Stephen. Hey Trevor, can we do a quick sound check, please?
Yeah, test.
Thank you. Elizabeth, can we do a quick sound check, please? Hi, Tim Saunders, it's Cheryl from the chambers, could you please, could we do, please do a quick sound check? Hi, Tim Saunders, it's Cheryl Long from the chambers, could we please do a quick sound check? Perfect, thank you. Hi Elizabeth, it's Cheryl, can we please do a quick sound check?
Testing one, two.
Thank you. Hi Daria, it's Cheryl from the chambers, could you please do a quick sound check?
Hello.
Thanks, Daria.
You're welcome. I can hear you.
Perfect.
Hi, I'm just dealing with some connectivity issues, so I might drop out and come right back in.
Thank you, counselor.
Alright guys, it's one, I'm just trying to get into the Zoom meeting, so Natalie knows I'm there or watching the Zoom as well. Call the meeting to order for Monday, I'm just not really, yeah. It's just a continuation of the November fourteenth committee, the whole meeting, but we'll start it today, November twenty seventh at 1:00 PM. Attendance at the start of the meeting is six of us in chambers, is Natalie back on now?
I'm still here, working on it.
Okay, I can hear you, so that's good. And you can hear us, obviously, so we're good. So a hundred percent attendance, we do actually have two, we have three people who are available to speak, I've got yeah, Sushi from the St. Albert Housing Society, are you with us? I heard that was a Zoom call. Not online yet, okay. Ken Crutchfield is in person. And Peter Bailey is available, he registered, but he's really doesn't have a presentation, he's just available for questions. When we get to the library motion, he is already, so while we're waiting to see if the housing society joins us, why don't we get Mr. Crutchfield to come up to the mic? Let me see, participants. Alright, you know the drill, I do not have to tell you. Thank you again for joining us, not often we have budget presentations, so take it away whenever you're ready. Same rules as always, five minutes, yep.
Oh, I appreciate this opportunity, Mayor Heron and councilors to address you today on the budget 2024. I value the contributions of administration to alert council and the residents as to the needs required to sustain and meet the challenges of a growing city like St. Albert. I, I share the interest of the residents and the council to do what is best for St. Albert now and in the foreseeable future. I'm currently seventy-four years old. I use city lands and programs, yet unlike the majority of the citizens who cannot be here today, I did have the time and the capacity to delve into the proposed budget, so hopefully you'll keep this in mind as you consider my points in the ongoing deliberations. There are some things that I like about this budget and some that I know I do not. There are realities, costs are rising, assets are requiring maintenance and demand grows. So denial is not an option. The city budget reflects the fact that it draws monies from individuals to go ahead and fund the needs and interests of the community. Council's decision should reflect what is best for the community. At the end of council's deliberations, residents should see a large part of the ask is invested in addressing the needs and wants of residents, of today's residents, and some asks set aside for projected growth. Some significant things that I like about budget 2024 is maintaining the Some significant things that I like about budget twenty twenty four is maintaining the restore, repair and service levels required of life cycle plans. I support the utility fiscal policy and rate setting model. Council should consider applying the similar self-funding model to the operation of fee-based facilities like Service Place Fountain Park and perhaps others like Library Services. There are some things that I do not like. The deferral of needed investments to avoid projected likely higher costs later in, in time, like at Fountain Park and Service Place. And in particular, I mentioned Service Place because I play in a plus sixty-five drop-in seniors hockey and. A perennial problem that we've been having, I know this might be hard to believe, but old guys after they've been skating do like to use the showers and. The showers there, you get it for about fifteen seconds and then it's cold, and I mean bitterly cold, like we're in Greenland. And we've talked to administration about that and they invariably say they'll look at it, but we've got showerheads that aren't even replaced. In those showers after two years, like that's unforgivable. But anyways, I digress. The thing is, is that those facilities are heavily used and I'd like to think that the tax dollars that we are putting in there and the fees that we're. Paying for those facilities are covering those types of incidentals. So I like the model of a city investing in a facility like that. We've got another one on the books here. But it should be a user pay model. In other words, the fees that are collected should cover the ongoing costs of maintaining that asset. The one thing that I don't like are the niggling cuts to one program to support another program as reflected the various budget motions that you're going to be dealing with here today. And I give as an example. The, the expectation of the service place should, in fact, increase their, their fees to go ahead and support other program areas, perhaps like library services. But as I mentioned earlier, it'd be, I think worthwhile to go ahead and, and look at the utility model perhaps for sustaining these other program areas. One other area that I have a real question about in my own mind, and I know there's a number of motions there, is the Lakeview Employment Lands. I'm of a mind that rather than St. Albert gearing up as, as a municipality to develop the competency as a developer, they should stick to what the municipality is best at doing, and that's planning. Take the position that land development is best left to proponents who have the proven history and resources to achieve the outcomes. The last thing, I'd like to suppress the desire to fast forward, forward projects of five or four.
You're good, thirty second warning.
Okay, before they're needed, North St. Albert Trail, I'm having a real difficulty with phase three going forward with that. I make my point there. Close off, I'd just like to say that budgets invite detail. The challenge for this council, many councils, is to focus on governance and direction. Hold administration accountable for addressing the needs, delivering the identifiable outcomes as much as providing insight to the future challenges. So I wish you good luck and. I support what you're trying to do. Thank you.
That just made my day. Good luck and support because I don't get it every, very often, so appreciate that. Any questions for Mr. Crutchfield? One day. Counsel Jolly, any questions?
No, thank you.
Perfect. All right. Thank you for joining us, Ken. Hope you stick around and watch. So do we have, yes, you meet with us now? I'm seeing a nod and a shake. Okay, yes. Yes, she, yes, Sushi, can you hear me? It looks, yeah, it looks like she was bouncing in and out, so. She's currently online now. Yes, Sushi, can you hear me? Oh, maybe she's having problems. I wonder if we can send her a chat message.
Yeah, I was just gonna say I'll send her a chat message. Peter Bailey's online also.
Okay, right, and we can be flexible, especially if she's having technical issues with timing. And Peter, you're with us as well?
Yes, I am.
Okay, you, I was told you don't have a presentation. You're just here to answer questions?
That's right, thank you.
I'm looking at the agenda. We're not getting to the motion on the library's operating budget for a bit. Do you want to wait or do you want to take some questions now?
I can wait, that's fine.
All right, I've got you noted that you're online waiting, so I'll remember to go to you when we get there. So with that, let's get into the meat of it. We have a consent agenda with two things on it now. Is that correct? All right, who wants to do the consent agenda? Go ahead, Counsel Hughes.
Okay, can you just put it up? I'm just gonna, it's the two. The recommendations in the following agenda reports be approved, four point one, P M twenty-four twelve waste drop-off user cards and five point eight, P M twenty-four nineteen uncommitted balance of in stabilization fund.
All right, I will call for the vote on that.
Just wanted one winner tonight.
When he's close, sorry, passes unanimously. So we're off to a rippering start. The first, the first motion was the utility waste drop-off user cards, which was to take it out of the budget. I can read the exact. Give me two seconds. The motion was that the proposed case for the waste drop-off user cards is unfunded from the two thousand twenty-four budget. And the budget is adjusted by fifteen thousand dollars, so that was approved. Thank you, Counsel Jolly. Now we're onto five point one, which is Counsel Broadhead. Your option two for council chambers, why don't I get you to read it in?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I move that capital project council zero three eight option to be funded in the twenty twenty four budget. Funding source to be either the capital funding envelope or the stabilization reserve as recommended by administration.
Awesome. Any questions on Counsel Broadhead's motion? Seeing none, I accept that, go ahead. Oh. Oh, go ahead, Counsel Killick.
I, I just like to understand the, the recommendation to get rid of the ramp and put in a lift. And is the ramp currently non-compliant? And, and if so, to, to you, the universal access building codes? And, and if so, by how much? Because it. Just.
It is not to code, I know, I know that.
Yep, that, that is correct. It is not. I know Donnie George and Louise are online. I'll ask if they've got any additional context. There's Louise.
I can start and then if Donnie comes on after, that would be great. So thank you for the question, Counsel Killick. I can't tell you exactly how much it is out, but no, it does not meet current building code. It's too steep an angle.
Hey, and. Is, is there a requirement to have in this proposal, there's a lift for the mayor's to have. Or her chair higher than everybody else. Is, is that also. A requirement for equal access or?
To put the lift in?
Yeah. For the, for the mayor's position.
I would assume so. It's accessibility, right?
Yeah, so, so I, I think by lift, we're not talking elevator here. We're talking about the relative height of the chairs on the bench. Is that where you're getting at, counselor? Okay, so it's, it's not a lift insofar as it's related to the ramp. We're talking about your, the height of your speaking position compared to the rest. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Is, is that.
Louise, yeah, sorry, I just wanted to make sure we were talking the same language. Sorry, Louise.
Yeah, no, thank you for the question. So yeah, the, the first lift where the ramp is, is an accessibility need. That's what's in option two. The second lift in the mayor's location is because of how the bench is constructed and the fact that that one sits higher. So it needs to be able to go flat to allow full accessible access to any counselor seat, but then be raised when council is actually in. In session so that it can correspond to the, the height of the bench.
Okay, but I, I thought we were changing the bench, so it would all be level. The, the other question is, to, to make the washroom and council. In camera meeting room, whatever we call it, at the back of city council chambers, are they also being made accessible? Under this project?
I do not believe so.
We'd have to have Donnie George chime in on that.
That was part of it.
Yeah, I, I'll ask if Donnie's on, she can comment. I, I believe the scope of the motion was specific to the bench itself. And, and access to the bench, which would lead me to conclude that we have not looked at the, the council lounge, to use the colloquial term in terms of the accessibility, but I stand to be corrected by Ms. Donnie George is online.
I confirm that's my understanding as well, but Tim is online. He's got more in-depth detail on the scope if he wants to speak to it.
Sure, good afternoon. Yeah, the, the charter itself is only related to the bench. There are, there is nothing more outside of the bench. The, the lifts, the, the issue with the ramp as it is today, it is too, too steep, as well as there is not a handrail on it. Those are the two issues that are making it not meet code for the ramp itself.
So we're, we would make just part of council chambers accessible and the other, other key components of it would, would not under, under this more expensive option. And then i- if we leave the ramp the way it is, it's grandfathered in, right? We, we're not doing it because we are told we have to do it, like. It, if we don't touch it, we can just leave it alone, or we could put a handrail on it, correct?
Tim, please, please go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, that is correct. There, there's, there's a lot of items that, you know, you would do it as the work proceeds. That would be when we would put the handrail on. There's nothing specifically stating that this must happen right now.
Okay. Thank, thank you.
Go ahead, Counsel Hughes.
A quick question. How much are we paying for all of the upgrades to Center Place over, what's the total cost of the upgrades? That we're doing, not for this charter, but in total.
Upgrades to what?
You're talking about the, the R M R program over the course of the next two years?
Just to the, the Center Place Charter, I know it's coming from that P M thirty-one, but I, how much in total are we investing in, in this building?
I'll ask Donnie to comment, thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's work in progress, Counselor Hughes. We have the total budget to work towards, so as the contract comes on, that, that's when the additional casket added, but Tim may have a, especially that. You know, indicates what's the total to date that we are estimating.
There is a total estimate of eighteen point five million construction. The design component is approximately one point two million dollars.
So it's at eighteen point five plus one point two or eighteen point five total?
Inclusive.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
All right, I see no more questions. I'll accept your motion. Go ahead, Counsel Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The question before council today is, is not whether we should do some work on this bench and, and modernize it. There's two motions to do that. The difference between one and two is simply whether or not we will make a council position available to everybody in our community, because that's what this is about. It's about making not only this council bench area available for people in wheelchairs, but also the mayor's chair available for people in wheelchairs. And if we don't do that, what we're saying to these people is that your disability prohibits you from being, or you have a systemic barrier. To assuming the role or running for the role of chief elected official in our community, and I don't think that's what we want to say. Yes, it's more money and yeah, I wish they find a very aesthetically pleasing lift should this motion pass. But the reality of it is, is this is about saying to everyone in our community, running for council is, is available to you. And if you happen to be in a wheelchair, it's all good. You can come here and run and not have to worry about getting lifted up eight inches to be a mayor. Anyway, that's my argument, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel Hughes.
Thank you. So I asked about the total cost because we have to realize we're putting eighteen plus million dollars into this building. And for whatever reason, the, the council bench and the council environment wasn't, is not a top priority of the eighteen million, which is why this has now come forward. But this bench rarely gets upgraded. It hasn't been upgraded since the eighties when it was built. And I think that if we're gonna do it, we should do it right. I don't think that we want to be in a situation where we put a bunch of money into it. And then someone who does have physical challenges is elected, and then we have to somehow on the fly try to modify a bench that's not easy to modify. Just so that we can, because, because we just didn't have the foresight to do it in advance. So. The fact that this was built and we can grandfather it in is to me not a reason for not doing it right when you're gonna make the corrections. And to be able to say that whoever is in these seats, we will make sure that you are accommodated and we are gonna welcome you in advance, as opposed to try to makeshift to something after the fact. The odds are that this bench will probably not be touched for another four decades. So when you look at the whole scheme of things, I think that. The odds of having somebody who might have physical limitations will be there. I have like, Bob Russell was not in a wheelchair, but he was in crutches for a good six months and really struggled to get into his seat every single time. And had he been up to a wheelchair before he had his hip replacement, I really don't know how he would have managed to sit on this bench. So if we're gonna do it, we might as well do it right. That's it, thank you.
Anyone else on debate? Counsel Killick?
I, thank, thank you for all the comments about accessibility and, and making it available to people in wheelchairs. I, I was hoping that there could have been a. Less costly solution, the, the ramp. Existing ramp may be a little bit too steep, but couldn't explain to me exactly how, how out of code it is. And there is enough room behind council chairs right now that you could put a ramp on, on one side up to the eight inches. To get to the mayor's higher, higher position without an expensive lift. So I, I was hoping that there were some more cost. Effective solutions, which would have been the next option that was given to us. That we could have looked at as being a hundred thousand dollars cheaper. So it's not that I would want to put any barriers in place for any resident that. Might want to run for council ever in the future that would have any disability. But it's just, I think there is an opportunity to do it in a more cost-effective manner.
Thank you, Counsel Killick. Anyone else? Counsel Broadhead? You know. I love, I love your heart and your spirit on this one. My, my biggest issue that I'm dealing with is our capital plans and the lack of money. And when I look at our budget, and this might be some similar messaging I'm gonna have through the next couple of hours, is a lot of the stuff that's coming forth through. Administration is very much. Inward facing, I call it, I T H R, land. It, it, it's all said necessary, don't disagree. But this is just another thing that's very inward facing for council. I think accessibility is obviously, I think it's important because I've got a motion on it. Important, but I feel like there's areas in the city that need, maybe need to be addressed before council chambers. Counsel Broadhead, you remember there was one fellow who ran, I think in two thousand and ten or thirteen, who wasn't a wheelchair. I don't think the fact that our chambers is not completely wheelchair accessible is keeping people from putting their name on the ballot. And I would hope that they would consider themselves welcome to run, and if they're successful, we would find a plan to make it work. But right now, two hundred thousand, what's a hundred ninety-two thousand? Is just a little pricey, and I would rather spend the money on some things that the entire sixty, seventy thousand people in our community can take advantage of. As we will most likely be increasing taxes this year. So Counsel Broadhead to close?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to everyone for their comments. Well. I brought forward this motion because we tend to disagree on this one. So the, the, the idea of, of someone running for, should they. Be elected, then it will be incumbent on us to change this. Uh, be elected, uh, then it will be incumbent on us to change this. And then we will do it on the fly and it will be a. Um. A jury rigged solution at the best. What we have an opportunity to do here is have, uh, uh. An engineered solution. And a one, uh, opportunity to upgrade this. Uh, to the standard that is actually code. We're talking about upgrading our building to existing code here. And, uh, whether or not we're forced to do it or not is, is really beside the point. If we're upgrading this room for, uh, to make this room functional for, uh, councilors. Then we should actually do it. And, uh, and Council Hughes made a great point. If you're going to do this once, let's do it right. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to call for the vote. Voting's closed. That motion fails with Council Broadhead, Council Hughes and Council Jolly, sorry, in favor. All right, we have a second motion on, um, the bench from Council Kilik. So I get to read it in, Council Kilik?
That Project Council zero three eight Chamber Bench Option One recommended for sixty-five thousand. Included in the twenty twenty-four budget funded from the capital budget.
All right, before I accept that, is there any questions? Seeing none, I accept it. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. This, uh, opportunity is, um. Cheaper of the two options that were presented to us. It does still, uh, meet the, the. Spirit and intent of improving the bench, um, uh, removing the, the big bear. Barrier that is in front of us, um. Remove, giving us more space underneath the, uh, desks for chairs to go in. Um, some safety, uh, issues. And I think there is the opportunity. To, uh, potentially include in that, um, a small ramp that would allow access up to the. The podium, the eight inch podium lift that is, is for, uh, the mayor's position, um. The, the original ask of, of changes to the bench was really to. Um, I, I recall we joked somewhat about taking a saw. And simply removing the, the big barrier here in front of us. And improving some of the electrical plugins. So I think this cheaper solution, option one. Um, meets the original spirit and intent of making those improvements. Um, and still makes it accessible, uh, for, uh, for future members, uh, current and future members. Of council. This is a good use of. Uh, limited capital dollars. It'll solve the biggest problems that we've all complained about over the years, multiple years and multiple terms. So this is a solution, I think, that, um, uh, is, is the best use of, of capital dollars and still meets. The vast majority of our, our request, original request, uh, requirements.
Thank you for that. Council Jolly's got her hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you. Just really briefly. So I, I voted in favor of the previous motion because of the accessibility piece. So I'll be voting. I'll be opposing this motion, um, because it doesn't address that, that really important issue. Certainly, it is less expensive, but I would rather. Um, spend more and do it right. Um, and, you know, at this point, that's going to be at a later date. So, so that's why I'm opposing this motion. Thank you.
Anyone else on, on debate? For me, Council Kilik is just again spending capital dollars on ourselves rather than the public. Which is why when we get to the next motion, which is your LED, I'm all over it because it's very much for the public. But this one. I've sat here for a lot of years and it's not perfect. But I'm okay to suffer because I think the public deserves these funds better than us. So sadly, I can't support it. But anything to close?
There just, uh, been longstanding comments from various councils prior to me sitting in this chair. Um, personally, sitting in this position, you're, you do not have line of sight. Um, to, uh, several members of administration as they sit in their, 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 uh, assigned seating. And I, I firmly believe that. An element of respect is being able to, when you're addressing administration, that you can actually see them and, and make eye contact. Uh, and hope, hoping that removing this big chunk of wood in front of us. It's a, it's a small investment for. Uh, that could probably last us another forty years, but it, it's an improvement, uh, I think that would have meaningful. Imp, impact to anybody that sits in one of these council chairs, uh, in particular as we move more. Uh, into electronic means and, and some of the things that we're going to talk about in a later motion around. Improving, um, connectivity to, in, in, within council chambers. Uh, an IT project, getting rid of the bench or, uh, and putting in the electrical improvements would. Would be a significant upgrade and, uh, would, would be money well spent.
All right. Thank you for that. Call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that motion fails with Council Broadhead, Hughes and Kilik in favor. I said that, uh, the next one was the LED lighting, but if you're okay, Council Kilik, we do have. Yasushi is now for sure online, right? Okay, why don't we go to Yasushi so he doesn't have to wait forever? So can you hear us now? Yasushi? Uh-oh. Is he there? Oh, there he is.
Hi, I'm so sorry. I am here, but it's so terribly noisy. I had to run to a quiet corner.
Do you want us to come back to you in a couple of minutes then?
Uh, can you hear me okay or is there a lot of background?
Can you hear us?
Oh, okay. Then if this is okay. Oh, yeah.
Okay, why don't you go ahead?
All right, thanks. Thank you very much. I'm, um, a board member of the St. Albert Affordable Housing Society. And I do understand that there's an opportunity to get some capital funding. Uh. We do recognize it's not going to be used as operating funding. As a nonprofit housing provider. One of the big, big expenses is the upfront cost of pre-development, um. Consulting fees, we could call it, whether it's geotech, survey, uh, engineering, architecture. Or even architectural concept design. It's a, it's a huge cost burden and it's. A first hurdle in order to get to even the discussion of affordable housing. In other words, the due diligence section. So if there is an opportunity to get some funding from the city. Uh, and we could call it capital funding, soft costs for pre-development of affordable housing solutions. Then we could actually get to the next level, which is present options to St. Albert's to council and as well get some sort of, um. Uh, indication that we can move our portfolio, uh, forward and increase the inventory of affordable housing in St. Albert. So definitely would appreciate the consideration for capital funding, whether it's going to be about, uh, twenty-five thousand or more. Or, or it's always better, uh, to give you an idea of the, um. Cost, uh, outside of St. Albert. Um, I am the executive director of Cleveland. It's a. Affordable housing provider. Each project that I try to get to the funding and proposal stage costs out of the pocket about thirty thousand dollars. That's on average for survey fees, for geotech fees, for architectural fees. And that's not even with a positive yes on whether the project can go ahead. Uh, over the last four years, out of sixteen projects, over half had been canceled and those costs had to be borne by other projects. Um, so again, it would be a great help to our society in St. Albert if we were able to, uh. Get a contribution towards those efforts where we expend our own funding towards getting, uh, the preliminary work done. Uh, I call it the pre-development. Uh, so thank you very much for your consideration.
Sorry, thank you very much. Um, are you okay to answer any questions? Does anyone have any questions? Council Jolly, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, just the, the motion about the housing society says that it's twenty-five thousand dollars to purchase units. Are, are. Is the housing society thinking that that would not be to purchase units, but to, to build new units?
You're muted. Yasushi, there we go. Yeah.
Okay, uh, thank you, Councilor. It's. Purchase units. Uh, twenty-five thousand would not go very far, uh, perhaps only as deposits towards a unit, uh, simple. But if we could analyze the impacts that we would have on either that purchase or others. Um, I think what we're looking at is. The opportunity stretching that twenty-five thousand to as much as possible. So, um. If it is for purchase, it would be a deposit. If it is for analysis of purchases, then I think we could, uh. Use it again to stretch further in our, um. Evaluation of what's the available product in St. Albert is.
Thank you. And does the housing society have any opinions? There's a motion on the table to, um. Cancel about a hundred and twelve. Um, thousand dollars in funding for all kind of housing bodies to leverage kind of opportunities that you have to develop new units. Um. That one would be kind of available to any, any housing body like yourselves. So are, are you? I, is there an opinion about canceling that funding?
Oh, definitely every bit helps. I love the word leveraging. That's definitely what we're trying to do is stretch the dollars that we do have. Uh, we wouldn't cancel any applications for other funding, um, but whatever opportunities there are, we are trying to uncover as many as possible. Uh, we're very encouraged that the pens have announced, uh, a lot of money possibly rolling out for portable housing. So if it is a matter of being prepared for that funding, uh, another quick example is one of the first questions is. Do you have the land and do you have a development permit? And in order to answer yes on both, it takes quite a bit of effort, even if it's deposited on the land. Even if it's, uh, reduced fees that we named consultant that's largely to, uh, work pro bono for, uh, affordable housing societies. Um, but yeah, leveraging, uh, and no, not canceling any other opportunities for funding that might come up.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
So any other questions? I see no more. So thank you for pulling over or whatever you were doing Yasushi before you got onto this call. And I'm glad it worked out. So we'll see you soon and we'll let you know how the vote goes. Thanks. All right. Now, Council Kilik, we'll go to your LED motion. Um, could you get you to read it in?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. The Charter Council. Zero thirty-seven SAP LED recognition lighting, recommended amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand. Be included in the capital budget funded source via the capital budget.
Okay, before I accept that, is there any questions from members of council? Council Jolly?
Thank you. Do we have any idea of what the costs would be to deal with, um, kind of applications or rejections of applications? Or lawsuits having to do with re, rejections of applications, like what City of Edmonton's had to deal with?
I think. I'm speaking, but I think we would, if we did this, would need a policy around. How that would. Who we would recognize, very much like our proclamation and flag policy, we would have to incorporate the, the recognition of lighting policy. So.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Councilor. You, you're correct. I think we would certainly recommend an admin directive at a minimum on this in order to provide. Some guidelines and parameters under which we would approve this. Um, because as you know, I make it's a pretty slippery slope if you don't have that to go forward. So i, i, specific answer to the question. There would absolutely be, uh, administrative cost in terms of the production and then the ongoing administration of that, but I, I don't. Have a number. I don't think we know what that is at this point.
Okay, thank you.
I, I do believe that there are probably other municipalities that we could copy some of their guidelines.
But I, I guess that's correct, Mayor. We wouldn't be reinventing the wheel on this. We, we, um, big borrow and steal from where we could, but we'd have to, obviously. Um, make sure that it was specific to St. Albert.
Thanks. Okay, I see no more questions, Council Kilik. So I'll accept your motion and let you have some opening comments.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, yeah, the, the, the key word here is. Um, recognition lighting. It, it's, it could be viewed as celebrating good things, but there are also scenarios. Uh, unfortunately, that happen in our community. I'm thinking about kind of humble bus crash. That, that would not. Be something that we would necessarily say would be celebration, but it's due recognition. Um, and this would be a way that throughout the year. Uh, in particular, in the winter, long winter months, that. We could recognize significant events and we have many. We, we know council has struggled with. Um, how, our, our rainbow crosswalk that gets damaged. We're struggling where to put. Uh, a potential orange shirt type, uh, crosswalk, um. We have Remembrance Day. We have Christmas. We may have Hanukkah. We may have. Many, many, many events, um, that happen in our community and our, our community. Is recognized for being very, uh, diverse and welcoming. And. We want to have something that's upbeat to recognize different activities or, or times throughout the year. Um, putting lights on, I, when this was first issued, I, I had issued a. An inquiry, um, and had the opportunity to meet with the engineering team and discuss with them that. What I would be looking for in, uh, in their response back. And it's along the lines of the way. Um, permanent LED lighting has been so well embraced. In our community, on our residents' homes. If we drive around any neighborhood, there are tons. Of recognition lights that are used throughout the year. Um, I only wish that they could play. Uh, blue, white and orange in, in response to the Oilers a little bit more, uh, frequently. But, uh, that, that point aside, um, I, I think there are many, many. Uh, opportunities throughout the year that could be, be recognized. Um, when we look at the, uh, design outline that has been proposed in the hundred and twenty-five thousand. It's very sympathetic to the outside heritage of the building, following the contours of the balcony. Um, not, uh, uh, being garish by any means. It, but it, but very sympathetic to the heritage of, of our. Of our, uh, beautiful building, St. Albert Place. Uh, in terms of policy, I absolutely agree that there would need to be a policy drafted up to how it. Uh, would be administered and managed, but I, I would look to the long experience that Edmonton has. Um, and a very, uh, uh, long experience and robust policy that has been tested numerous times. Uh, without any, um, negative consequences. So there are, there are policies that we can adopt and follow, best practices. That again could minimize, um, impacts to administration staff and, and time. As well as, um. Have something that allows, as Edmonton's, uh, policy does. Input from the public as to when those lights would change. So it's public facing and public driven. And it's on the public face of our building that. Can show our, our recognition to all kinds of things in our community. So I think this is a. A, a good opportunity to, uh, rather than do our symbolic, um, kind of raising a flag. Uh, maybe once a month, this, this could have be something that could change once a week, uh, throughout the year or potentially more often. But it would be a great way, uh, to, to do this. The other thing to bring this motion forward and it's noted in. In the original backgrounder, that this work could be incorporated. With the, uh, RMR upgrades that are taking place within the, the rest of the building. Uh, and it was noted that there were economies of scale that could be, uh, uh, achieved. By tendering this at the same time as some of the other exterior upgrades and fixes to the brickwork around the building. Um, that we, we could tender it potentially to. Uh, same contractors that are bidding on some of the other external work and do the work at the same time and get some economies of scale. So I think this is, um, a good. Opportunity to get it on the to-do list now. Um, and, and sync the work up with the work that's going on. Uh, the rest of the work, RMR work that's going on here at St. Albert Place. Um, I think those are, are the key things that I'd like to highlight of why, um, I brought. Um, I think those are are the key things that I'd like to highlight of why um I brought this for the today for consideration.
You finished right when I put cookie in my mouth. Counsel Jolly?
Thank you. Uh, so I I love the idea, but I hate the location. Um, which is on a building that that is a work of art in its own right. So as someone who follows um Douglas Cardinal's work and and I was privileged to hear him speak at the Art Gallery of Alberta a couple of years ago. I'm I'm a bit horrified of the thought of having these lights affixed fixed to his work. Um, if this goes ahead, um, I I'd also be concerned that we'd be putting ourselves at at risk of legal action. Like when a group actually sued the City of Edmonton over its refusal to to light up um in honor of a particular event. Or just even administrative energy dealing with um disagreements from from community groups about either. Putting on lights or not putting on lights, kind of depending on their perspective. So that's why I'm opposing that this uh today. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Uh, any other comments? Anything to close?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to close, uh recognizing that. Recognizing that recognition lights have been put up many uh historic um very visible uh. Buildings and structures around the world, like the Eiffel Tower, um, the Arc de Triomphe, uh, the Parthenon. Sydney Harbor Bridge, and in fact, um, the Edmonton High Level Bridge. So this this uh proposal to put lights on St. Albert Place. I think is is well in line with many other uh historic sites at. Uh, Big Ben, for example, that draw draws everybody's attention when they drive by and they look at those uh historic. Buildings and monuments, and when they're lit up, it draws people's attention to them. And it signifies uh certain uh uh an increased level of recognition. So I think if those buildings can be uh done in a sympathetic way. Uh, to their architecture and heritage, uh, we we can find a solution that will likewise work here for. Our beautiful and historic St. Albert Place.
All right, call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that motion passes by majority with Counsel Hughes and Counsel Jolly opposed. Uh, you're up next again, Counsel Kilik with um Angie Zero Eight Three.
Sorry to interrupt, Counsel Kilik. We just changed the wording slightly on this motion. It's so it's different than what appeared in the agenda package, so it'll be up on the screen. If you could just take a look.
What have you changed?
Um, we took out the portion that related to twenty twenty six dollars.
Are you okay, Seth?
Yep.
All right.
That project charter ENGS zero eighty three, La Combe Lake Parking Lot Paving. Be approved in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand for design in twenty twenty four to be funded from the Capital Reserve.
All right, before I accept that, is there any questions? Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, for uh forgive me if I'm mistaken, but didn't we already debate this during the RMR portion or?
We just debated whether it should be included.
Or or whether to develop a project charter, but it wasn't, it was unfunded. And then I said, are you gonna debate this? And he said, yep.
Okay, so we just debated whether or not we should debate it. That's what we were debating.
Essentially, yep.
Okay.
Debatable.
Okay, that was all. I just, for some reason, I felt like we'd already argued this before. So, okay, I understand now. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm actually looking around more than I'm looking at my screen because it's so slow, but I'll do both.
Uh, just a question. Uh, background refers to the potential that there would be. Uh, a new facility or or uh maybe a. Another development in that area. Uh, is there anything planned for that? I I'm not aware of anything in our uh long range plans or park plans or anything like that. I know we just just did a quite a um remediation of the actual uh facility just recently. Um, but I don't, I'm not aware of anything else on the horizon. Is there anything else? So.
I'll ask Donnie George to provide initial comment, then anything parks related would be, uh, Danielle Plodlovene. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Uh, thank you for the question, Counselor Mackay. As far as I'm aware of, there is nothing that's in the plan in terms of development. Danielle, if you want to add to that.
Yeah, thanks, Donnie. Um, thanks for the question, Counselor Mackay. We currently have no plans to do any major redevelopments in the La Combe Park, um. La Combe Lake Park area. We did just do a major refurbishment of that facility and amenity over the last few years. And utilities and environment did some work as well. So there's no known plans to do any major work in that area right now.
Not to rehash the debate that we had. What was the um reasons that we didn't pave the parking lot at that particular time? Or was that dropped from the actual project charter? Or was it even included in the project charter as it related to other repairs going on?
Thanks for that question. We didn't have it as a part of that project at that time. Um, I think this is where it says we move forward. If we put another project there, we would um include it if we were doing it at that time. But we did not have it included at that project charter at that time.
Thanks. Are you aware of any complaints in relation to that parking lot from residents? Whether it's from not being paved, not having access, like by.
Thanks for that question. We did track back through our records and we can't locate um complaints that we've heard from the public. I'm not sure if public operations, so Ms. George, she would have any ads to that, that they've received any. But we in Recreation Parks did not have a tracking of any complaints on that being a gravel lot.
Not that I'm aware of. I have no indication of any complaints from there. Um, that's. We have other thirteen gravel parking lots, Counselor Mackay. This was one among that thirteen. So this was debated for to be brought forward back into consideration.
Yeah, I'm aware. I mean, we did have one complaint where they drink, when it got quite icy. The access from the parking lot down to the paved portion was gets a little icy, but we did rectify that by putting a sandbox there, I believe. I, that's my recollection, but.
Maybe perhaps I can ask Dean if uh he's online to add to that answer. Any additional items, Dean?
Uh, thanks, Donnie. Uh, no, nothing really to add. I I haven't heard any complaints about the um like traction of the area. Or like mobility around the area from actual users. Um, public operations, if anything, may have responded if under icy conditions, um, they required any attention or maintenance activity.
Hey, thanks. I I'm I'm just aware of one. It came in as a council inquiry. It was just a situation a couple of years ago. Where there was a buildup of ice and so all we did was actually just put a sandbox right there at the uh exit from the parking lot. Down to the paving uh of the actual walkway, but that was. Twenty eighteen, I believe. No more questions.
Right, and Counsel Jolly, no questions?
Well, I'm good.
Counsel Kilik, go ahead and.
Yeah, thank you. Oh, did somebody? Uh, thank you. The motion, I brought forward the motion because uh I'd been spending a lot of time at the dog park. Uh, not with my dog, but babysitting our our daughter's uh uh dog and then our our son's dog. And in going to the dog park over that period of time in uh. In the early, late winter and early spring, the number of people in the dog park that complained to me. Um, about, and it was a lesson to be learned that I shouldn't wear my council jacket while going to the dog park. Um, was was quite high. Um, everybody said, boy, we've done a beautiful job of completing the dog park, putting in this the the water access, the the small dog. Portion. We've done a beautiful job of repaving around the lake, putting in viewing points and fencing. Um, seating areas, more picnic tables, um, all of the trail improvements in that area. And and the the simple comment was the parking look lot is unfinished. It's full of potholes. They collect water. Um, they're they're dirty. Uh, I can't push my baby stroller through it. Can't pull my my kid's wagon through it. Um, I want to go skating and there's gravel all over the the walkways from uh sand that is put down on the. Uh, in that area. Uh, this, this is a year round, multi-use, uh, beautiful uh park and facility. Treasured by our residents and the parking lot uh looks totally unfinished. Um, it doesn't meet our current standards for parking lots. Uh, we would never build a a new park without parking uh and pave parking. Um, it will, by paving, it'll prove improve the the number of stalls that are there. Currently, right now, people park totally randomly. Um, there, there's no lines, obviously, on a gravel parking lot to help guide people. So it's a very inefficient uh parking lot. They're they're just randomly parked all over the place. And paving it uh in the future uh could uh could certainly assist in that. The the reason the motion was changed uh from the way I had it originally worded. Uh, is so that we can do the planning and design work in twenty twenty four. The city, as we all know, does not have multi-year budgeting. So to have a a motion that had included the one point three million for the actual paving. Construction uh work to be done in twenty twenty six uh would not work as as we can't approve things ahead of. Of uh of the particular year that they're in because we don't have multi-year budgeting yet. Maybe when we get there, this would have been been easier, but that's why the the wording was uh was changed. Um, the, again, just looking at at the age groups that that use this. Uh, we just debated having universal access to uh council chambers. And paving the parking lot uh and getting rid of the potholes, making it easier for grading in the winter. Um, and and just generally making it more accessible is is what I would hope to see accomplished by this. Having the motion put forward to get the planning done would then have it uh higher priority for the actual capital work that would come later. And uh there, that would be something that would be, again, looked at and debated for the twenty twenty six uh budget. But hopefully, once we've done the detailed design work, it it would um have that higher ranked on the. Within the prioritization uh matrix. So. Uh, I think these are the the customer or resident feedback, user feedback that I got from not only the dog park, but all the park. Around it is what prompted me to listen to those residents and bring it forward uh for consideration in in this year's uh in this year's budget.
All right, anyone else on debate? Counsel Brumansky? You finally got it.
My button's a little weak today. Okay, uh, thank you, uh, Counsel Kilik for bringing this forward. And um I understand your intent and we all agree, you know, there's flaws with some parking lots in the city. And and you know, people uh do have to accommodate um by their own means in, you know, in coming and going. But uh, the hundred and fifty thousand is is just, you know, giving design of a. I don't even know where the hundred and fifty thousand came from, right? You know, for the number that you need to do the design. And giving direction to administration to just do a design for a project that will be one point three million dollars. It's on the books in a few years from now. I think that they would do a thorough design, you know, themselves in the plan at that time. So um, I I know that it looks like it's a small motion now at a hundred and fifty thousand. But in this year that we're trying to keep our costs down, uh, you know, for the taxpayer in the city, it's a hundred and fifty thousand that we don't need to spend now. And we we may have to redo it at the point that the project is done. So I apologize, but I can't support this one. Thank you.
Counsel Broadhead?
I'm I'm kind of torn here because I I certainly appreciate the uh in the uh rationale behind your uh your motion. Um, my problem is is it didn't make the, didn't make the line uh when it went past administration and uh. And I think there's a, there's a couple of issues that you raised. Uh, I I I recognize that uh gravel parking lots uh can sometimes. Um, not be as uh. As utilitarian, perhaps, as as paved. Uh, but I mean, if there's uh if there's potholes all over the place, it's more of a maintenance problem. Um, so. I'll listen to your closing arguments, but as it stands right now, I wanted you to know that it was leaning towards not supporting it. So you know, if I do, you'll know my rationale.
Counsel Kilik, um, my thoughts are, there's so many gravel parking lots in this community. I agree that that's not standards and I don't like them. But one point three million dollars, I think, can be spent elsewhere in our community right now. I go to the dog park. It's functioning. So it's not, it's not that we don't have a dog park and we can't. Doesn't work. I mean, people have their sleds in there and it's not the per, it's not the best. I totally agree. But one point three million dollars is an enormous amount of money and that's actually more. One point three four plus the design of a hundred and fifty when we're kind of have some big projects coming ahead. So. And anything to close? Try to change Wes and I?
Yeah, just to uh close, I I I do want to make it clear that this is what we're being asked to approve today. Is just the uh hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do the design. It's not to do the capital. The capital wouldn't come until uh twenty twenty six budget. So I I want to make sure everybody is absolutely uh clear on on that. Um, in terms of the hundred and fifty thousand in design now, uh, we have to do that to get it on the books. If if for build in on construction in twenty twenty six. If we keep deferring the design, it will never get on the books to get built. And it is a highly used uh facility. There have been days that I've gone there, both in the summer and in the winter. Um, where people are forced to park actually along the the drive access, the the little road in. And that's currently uh not up to any kind of standard and and it's actually separated with temporary uh jersey barriers. So as our population grows and the use of that dog park grows, we we keep hearing the need for more dog parks. And even um contemplating one at our amenities site. This, this to me seems like a project that we could actually finish. And and be proud of the way it looks rather than having a a a gravel pothole, wet, muddy. Uh, parking lot. Driving into a beautiful facility. The two just don't seem to go together with me. So um, again, just to address the accessibility issues that I've heard of. Um, from residents, to get it on the books for the uh for the design this year. Uh, or I guess next year's budget, twenty twenty four, so that we can start to plan the big capital uh later. And um, the the most critical thing is we know it's not meeting our current design standards. We would never, if we were to build La Combe Lake Park facility today. We would never build it with a gravel parking lot. Now is the time to fix it and address that problem. The other thing is, as we all recall, last year in our RMR budget, we went around and repaved. And and significantly invested money in our RMR project, repaving existing parking lots. So somehow it's okay to fix uh potholes in parking lots that were previously paved. Um, and and we spent a lot of money on that. Um, but in this particular case, where we've got a gravel parking lot. We're we're uh reluctant uh to invest some money uh to get it on the books for uh for paving. And making it more accessible and actually completing uh that project. As Counselor Mackay uh questioned, there's nothing else in the in future plans. There's no other building that's going to be built there that would drive um this kind of uh uh repaving of the parking lot. So in in lieu of anything else happening in that area. uh this was an opportunity to bring it forward as a standalone item. Uh get the design work done this year, prepare for the big capital in in two thousand twenty six and make it accessible for all residents. So I hope uh my fellow councillors support this budget um uh request.
All right, well, call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that motion fails with councillor Killick in support. Uh councillor Hughes, you're up next with council chambers broadcasting upgrades. I'll read it in.
Yep, the the council changes broadcasting upgrade for council chambers. Second option of a hundred seventy five thousand in the Douglas Cardinal boardroom, second option upgrade of a hundred eighteen thousand eight hundred be funded from the capital budget.
All right, councillor Mackay has a question.
Yeah, to administration in the background, or I couldn't make out um or wasn't sure, so I figured I'd better save my question. So yeah, um like I struggle with the sound quality in the room and I struggle with the fact that I have to read a presentation either by cranking it on the neck to look to the left or straining my very old eyes to uh look over the shoulders of administration. And I I miss a lot in the PowerPoint. So with with the intent of having the best option, would that actually allow me to have a a computer screen in front of me that actually would allow me to have access to um uh whatever the presentation is on the overall bigger screens?
Yeah, thank you, councillor. I see Joanne's already proactively turned on her camera. I'll defer.
Thank you for that question. So actually, that capability will be available in the better option as well as the best. So you don't have to go to the to the most expensive option to have that capability. So you will have in front of you, they're called discussion stations, and you'll have a ten-inch screen that you can tilt as you need to that, yes, you'll be able to see the presentations. They'll be simultaneously on the overheads for the gallery, and you'll have it on the tenant's screen in front of you.
Thank you. And the sound quality in the chambers, where will the where will the speakers be? Will they be in front of on the like, do they come out of the microphone? Do they come out of a combination microphone in the bigger room? Where would that come from?
So part of the system does regulate the sound within the within the chambers. So the speakers, there'll be speakers in that discussion station that's in front of you as well. And so it will automatically, when you have your mic turned on, um those speakers will be lowered, so you don't get feedback. When your mic is off, you'll be able to get the sound from the room through those speakers.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that's one of my biggest concerns. I I'm I struggle to get good good sound quality and I I struggle to get good visuals. And I've, I mean, I've, you you know where I've come from, Joanne, you know the capabilities that we used to have. So um anyways, I I those are those are, I just wanted to clarify clarify that those things would actually be significantly better than what we have currently.
Yes, that's the intent.
And that also would include the Douglas Cardinal boardroom. We would have a similar kind of discussion stations or workstations in front of us in uh in that facility, or would that look a lot different?
No, they will be quite similar. They will be wireless, because certainly one of the challenges in the Douglas Cardinal boardroom is the wires across the floor. Uh but it will be very similar. And the one thing I will also add is those discussion stations also have cameras that uh will be activated based on the microphone being activated.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Seeing none, councillor Hughes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um when I look at what's necessary or not necessary, one of the big things is that most of the people who do participate watching council meetings happen to do it online. Majority of the people don't come in. We have two. Um hopefully, our total viewership on this budget is greater than two. Um and so the majority of people, when they do watch it, they do watch it, like I said, online. And what this will allow this to do is for A, for council to be able to participate better, where we're not straining to be able to see, and we can have everything directly in front of us. It will also amalgamate all of the different systems that are currently being held together with chewing gum and Scotch tape to allow them to actually all work seamlessly. For example, we have Granicus here, then we have something else coming for the videos. Everything is not actually working uh symbiotically, it's just being held together by a lot of praying, I think, at this moment. Um and so that's the second thing, is that we can have everything actually integrated. And the third thing is that when the quality of both the sound and also the visuals come up for the public, they will be able to see who's speaking without having the the camera pan and try to zoom in and come back out again. Or in the case of Douglas Cardinal, it's just continuously from a distance somewhere near outer space. Um and then there's a small dot of somebody talking in the distance. And so it's very difficult in Douglas Cardinal for the public to actually really participate in the meeting. It's just taken from such a difficult position that you're basically just getting auditory. And so this would allow us, as we're upgrading, as we're putting eighteen million dollars into this building to at least when we have our council meetings and um any of the other committee meetings, that the public will be able to have the best presentation possible for them to be able to view and be able to know what's happening. And um more than once I've had somebody come up to me and say, you know, something, I was watching the meeting, I just couldn't follow it. Because it's the distance of where they're trying to go, or the screens are coming to shift. And they were just like, so what exactly happened? I watched it and I didn't understand because I was it, we did not have the ability for us to be able to zoom in and when we needed to do it. So I just look at this and think this is an opportunity when we're already tearing up walls anyway, that we can actually get both buildings, uh both of them actually put together properly. And the reason why I chose the the middle option is because this one allows the touchscreen, just as we have with the current Granicus system. We'd have the touchscreen options, which just makes it that much easier for us to be able to do our job. So um I realize, yes, it's not a small amount of money, but I also realize that at some point, we have to actually accept the fact that we need to upgrade the facilities of where the decision-making is happening and allow the public to be able to participate um if fully from where they are at their own home or at work, to be able to do the best job possible. And there's a lot of things that have been compensated over the past years. Um certainly after we went into online, we were scrambling to figure out how to make it all work and to work hybrid. Um and just because it happens to still be somewhat functional from our point of view doesn't mean it's actually working the best from the public's point of view, and else does not mean that we're not doing it on a wing and a prayer right now. So that's why I wrote it for tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else on debate? Go ahead, councillor Mackay.
Yeah, sorry. I hope the touchscreen's a little faster than if this passes than this one currently. Um I actually, you know, one of the, you know this very well, Madam Mayor. One of the issues we had last term was where we were deciding when at committee, we would, you love the Douglas Cardinal boardroom, you like the informalness of it, you like the access. Um I I share that, but what I didn't like was the 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 way of methods of communications method, the the kind of a lack of the ability to have the same tools available that is in this room, even though I think they're still substandard. I think certainly you get into Douglas Cardinal, and maybe what makes it more informal is the lack of those things. But for me, I found that this way you would have full access to all of the material, background material. You would have access to all the presentations. Uh you would have easy access so that you could have uh for not only your devices, but also you would, you you know, you're not running around with extension cords looking to plug into your computer. And I think it just functionality, it would make the that committee room so much better. And so um you know, that that's what's kind of leaned me over this way versus having, uh you know, like, why do we, why would we need this versus some of the earlier discussions that we had around the bench? This then at least gives me some um uh assurances that I can actually do my work, both here but also in a in a committee room, which um I just think is something that's important rather than have to trip over uh duct tape and uh other uh extension cords, although I'm pretty light on my feet lately.
Anyone else on debate?
For me, almost three hundred thousand dollars is just. If we all logged into Zoom every meeting, we'd be fine. I'm sitting here watching it on Zoom. It zooms in perfectly. I can chair a meeting using Zoom from another part of the country. Our technology is not that bad. Um I've had to go back and review videos. I never have a problem following it, and I've never had a single complaint from a resident um that they can't um watch our meetings. I've actually heard people that do, not very many, but they do. And they're they they find it fine. Again, it's one of those things, it would be awesome to have. But three hundred thousand dollars, it's almost three hundred thousand dollars to do this. So all of you have been supplied with a very decent laptop. And the second screen that you have here allows you to, if you were on Zoom, you could see all the presentations. You could have another screen with all the supporting documents. I think we're fine um as is. Call for the vote. Oh, no, councillor Hughes, sorry, absolutely. Go ahead and close.
Thank you. This is more to do than not just how it is working for us in particular, although this will certainly be an upgrade for our ability to do our work. It also has to do the fact that we have four different systems that we're hoping are actually going to work together that we can't guarantee are behind the scenes. And when it does crap out, it's going to be a huge mess to deal with, and we're going to be paying a lot more trying to get this fixed in emergency fashion. And the reality is also that if you want the public to actually watch the meetings, we need to actually put out meetings that are put more professionally done than zooming around back and forth, especially the Douglas Cardinal boardroom, which is abysmal as far as actually watching and following that meeting or trying to actually felt from a user point of view. So um yes, it's not cheap, but we are putting a lot more money into a lot of other things. And if we actually think that we want the public to participate, we have to provide them with a mechanism that actually provides the quality that we're they're expecting when they watch it. This is not a small community. We're a professional community, and we should be putting on a professional image as we portray our meetings. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Call for the vote. And just so you know, I recognize what you do, Sean, to keep this thing running. Little bit more than a prayer. There's a prayer and there's Sean. Sorry, did I miss the, sorry, that motion fails with councillor Broadhead, Hughes and Mackay in favor. All right, we are on to um we are on to councillor Hughes' motion on the Housing Society Society Capital Reserve. I'll get you to read it in.
I just had a quick question before I read it in.
You might not.
Well, it just, I'm not sure if I need to have clarification in the wording or not.
On the actual motion?
On the actual motion. So the intent, the understanding from uh admin is that we'd actually create a specific reserve for the Housing Society. And that wasn't necessarily my intention, as opposed to having it put it in their reserve specifically for capital. So i- is it necessary for us to hold that until they actually do an expenditure? Or because I obviously don't want to go there having them promise it'll be capital and then whoopsie, used it for operating or something of that nature? So I guess it was it just done this way specifically to make sure that we don't have any misunderstandings later?
The impression or how we interpret it was to set up reserves. So if that is your intent to just provide them the money each year, we'll change the wording and the understanding. There's no need for us to put it in our reserve and funding each year.
Okay, I I guess if we keep it in the reserve, I'm not of a problem doing that per se.
It's a double check. Is it is yours to do be ongoing or for one year too?
I think my intention was to have it be ongoing. Now again, do I need to change the wording on this? So how would I just, how do you want me to change it? It's twenty five, that twenty five thousand be funded annually?
If we could just maybe ask for two minutes, um just let the team sort of talk amongst themselves, and we'll come back with a recommendation. Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask a quick question of councillor Hughes? Some more waiting?
Oh, sure, while we're waiting. That's a good idea.
Thank you. So councillor Hughes, I'm just wondering, so are you the only other organizations that we provide ongoing um funding to are the the library and arts and heritage? So is your intention that we would just add this third?
Yeah, I mean, the reality is we don't have anything going um on an annual basis towards affordable housing, towards increasing the number of capital units. So we don't actually have any other housing societies that are specifically made in St. Albert, so to speak. Um I know, and Homeland does already get substantial support from us. So um yeah, it would it would be to help us act, helps and helps you increase the number of housing stock. And this is an organization that has that intention.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
You don't see this as ongoing, do you?
The intention is to be ongoing, because if we're going to do a reserve, we might as well put money into it regularly.
That's where administration.
So that that's what they're changing the wording for right now.
Yeah, I appreciate your indulgence. We're just about done here.
Councillor Hughes, if I could just clarify as well, did you want to leave it as for the purchase of affordable housing units? Or did you want to, based on the presentation, did you want some rewording around?
No, I want it so that we can purchase additional units. This is not to do groundwork or something else. This is so we can purchase additional units.
Okay, so not even building, like an external purchase?
We can do bill a purchaser and and or building. I just I just want to.
Right?
Sorry, what was that?
You can be specific to say it's for capital.
Yeah, I have it for capital. So it's just, it's to acquire additional units. How about that?
Okay.
That makes sense. I didn't realize I was going to make it this complicated. I'm sorry, guys.
Just the challenges, of course, on an ongoing fund from capital is a little bit challenging. So we would do it very similar, I think, to the community capital grant, where it would be part of the RMR program.
Okay.
Um still be approved every year, but it would be part of that, because that's the only way we can kind of do it from capital as a ongoing.
Okay.
Right now, the anticipation has been built up. I think we're ready.
All right, the twenty five thousand be funded to the Housing Society? I'm just, I'm wondering, okay, I know we did all this, and I know I said I didn't care if it was in a reserve. I'm like, I, would it be safer to put it in a housing reserve that they could acquire for additional units when they were ready? So I took out reserve, can we put it into housing reserve, like a the how to the Housing Society capital reserve? Can we can we add those in there and?
Okay, are you referring to their reserve, like on their financial?
Uh we'll put it on ours, and then they can ask for it when they actually want to build, when they're gonna, when they're gonna buy a new unit, we'll cut them the check.
Okay, I feel like that's a completely different motion. We might need a bit more time if we're going.
I guess, well, that's what the intention, I think, when I read the background, or was that you guys were gonna, we were gonna put it into a reserve, right? So I'm like, let's, at first I thought not necessary, but then I can see that it is a safety mechanism to make sure that the money goes directly to where we intended it to go at the time of purchase. Makes sense?
Yes, and then there'll have to be a process for them to yeah, request those funds, I guess, at some point.
I have faith in you guys.
Okay.
Okay.
Question then, would that, what happens if they didn't purchase a unit, would it carry over or would they have to carry? Like, you wouldn't carry it over, so if they didn't buy one, didn't buy a unit one year, it wouldn't carry over?
It would just accumulate. It would be twenty five. Yeah, the intention is to do it every year and accumulate. And then when they have enough money, either through us or through other sources to buy one, they make the withdrawal, and then again, it continues. That would be the intention. I feel like, you know, and sometimes like I just need you to remove your own appendix, and it seems so simple when you just had that bottle of Scotch and a knife, and now it seems so much harder. Yeah.
Why don't you guys, why don't we take a ten-minute break? Might as well stand up, stretch, use the bathroom?
So two thirty then?
Councillor Jolly, just shortly after two thirty, come back.
Sounds good. Thanks.
All right, Counsel Jolly, you back with us? There she is. Okay. All right, what is our path forward? Do we have a different motion?
That a new reserve called the Housing Society Capital Reserve be created to assist with the purchase of additional affordable housing units? And that twenty-five thousand be transferred to the new reserve in 2024 on an ongoing basis as far as, as part of the RMR program. Really well done, guys.
Why RMR? Seems like this is growth. Not that it really matters to me, but.
I think they said that just from the budgeting perspective, um, the annual things that come out, come out through RMR.
It's all good. All right, so that's good motion. You like that?
That's a beautiful motion. Thank you, guys.
Any questions on this new motion? All right, I accept. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, when we were doing the whole planning for outside agencies quite a few years ago, we've had an ongoing discussion about the Housing Society. Because in part, the Housing Society, it needs to acquire additional funds in order to get more units and, and we wanted to only fund them from an operating standpoint and not to operate them from operating capital in their operating grant. And so many efforts were taken to make sure that we were just doing operating. But as a result, we also did not do anything to commit towards the capital on an annual basis. And so that part kind of just fell by the wayside and we focused on just having operating. And the challenge for the Housing Society is even if they become more efficient, then they get less money the following year. So it's really hard for the Housing Society to actually acquire the capital they require to increase the, in additional units. So this is, um, in my opinion, to close the gap, shall we say? In that, uh, is I have a motion about the other one afterwards. And I thought instead of giving it to just an unknown entity that may or may not appear, that we would be doing something tangible on an annual basis to move towards a goal with the Housing Society. So I thought, well, it can start with twenty-five thousand. If at some point in the future, we decided to up it, that would be a different discussion. But I really think that our goal needs to be that we recognize that we need to be doing something tangible that we know can achieve a goal towards affordable housing. And to allow the Housing Society to know that this is how much we are willing to commit towards our capital. They're going to need to fundraise the difference um, to get there. But this is just a little bit of an edge to help them so that they know that, you know, if they get halfway there, we do it for three years, we're at seventy-five, they do seventy-five, and then we got another housing unit available, and another family, um, can finally hear the words, yes, we found a place for you to stay that you can afford to live in, that would not otherwise get that. So, the reason I want to have it in the reserve was also in part, after thinking about it and poor Anne, having to look for, bewildered every time I thought of something, um, is to make sure that the money goes specifically when they're ready to purchase a new unit and not prior to, so that there's no confusion about the funds. So when they say we've got enough to come forward, administrative process to say this is how we will then offer some of the money from the, some or all of whatever we have accumulated to making sure that we get additional units. So, um, that is the intention behind it. Um, the other concern I have with the other one, which is also, I was kind of hoping the other one come first, but, um, is that if you're a developer and you wanted to develop affordable housing units, all you have to do is ten percent below market value. And then there's a timeline. It's maybe ten years, sometimes it's twenty. And then after that, they don't have to have affordable housing anymore. So we can put all the money we want into it for a developer. They get a bunch of grants to build affordable housing, and after ten years, it goes back to market value and that affordable housing unit's now off the market. What I like about the Housing Society is they don't have that intention. The Housing Society's goal is to acquire more units and have them as affordable housing for as long as it's in their possession. And not to sell it at market value, uh, when the time is up and they no longer have to offer any type of discount. Their goal is to try to help families, not necessarily help their bottom line. So with that, that's why I was suggesting that we actually just, uh, I guess, put our money where our mouth is in that we said we wanted housing operating to be separate from capital, but we did not put anything into capital. And so this is a way for us to close that loop. And to, um, just help them, uh, both from a monetary and also just from an encouragement point of view of being able to get and meet their goals of achieving ability for more families in St. Albert to be able to live affordably. That's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counsel Hughes. Anyone else on debate? Counsel Broadhead?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I certainly appreciate the intent behind the motion, um. My problem here is, is that basically what you've done is you've set up a grant program for the St. Albert Housing Society, uh, and there are many, uh, charities within our community, um, that would love to have such a, uh, program established for them as well. Housing, uh, for sure is a need right now. But we also have other housing, uh, the one that we're, uh, dealing with because we're part of their management, uh, body is, is the, uh, Homeland Housing and we're working at, with them to, to build something right now. And, uh, I, I just think that this, this needs to be part of a larger policy if we're going to start to, um, because what we're doing here is singling out a specific uh, charity and we're giving them, uh, ongoing, uh, capital support. I mean, we, there's a hundred that could come to the door and want this particular program. So, uh, as, as it stands right now, I, I think it's premature at this point in time, uh, because I don't understand it beyond uh, just a gift of twenty-five thousand dollars annually to build up to buy one particular unit. But, uh, in any case, that's my problem with it and, uh, uh, just my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Broadhead. Counsel Killick?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, my, my thoughts on this are, are actually coming from one hundred and eighty degrees, um, from my fellow counselor. Um, this, this is very clear that we, we in Canada are in a affordable housing crisis. And that is well understood in the news on a daily basis. St. Albert is not immune from that. This clearly sets aside twenty-five thousand dollars in, in a reserve which we hold on to. We, the city, hold on to. It's only accessed when the Housing Society can show that they would need it. And it is specific for the purchase of additional affordable housing. It, it is got some very specific guidelines around it. And anything that we can do to get an affordable housing unit available. And what I see this as as kind of seed money that the Affordable, um, the Housing Society could go to other levels of government, um, or funding sources and say, you know what? St. Albert has put their money where their mouth is. We've talked about affordable housing for so long. Uh, it's a well-understood crisis and I don't use that word lightly. Um, in fact, I'm kind of embarrassed that we have a, an affordable housing crisis, but we do. And this will, uh, put twenty-five thousand dollars aside on an annual basis that can be accessed to help uh, purchase a, a unit or units eventually. So I see this as a small, um, contribution to a big problem. And, uh, it's one that's got enough guardrails around it, uh, that will, uh, make, make it effective. So I absolutely support this.
Thank you, Counsel Killick. Anyone else on debate?
Um, I agree with everything you just said, Counsel Killick, about housing and the crunch and the need. I just don't feel like this is the right way to accomplish what we want to do in the community. This is, um, from as far as I know, not been requested from the Housing Society to counsel because if it was, it would have come to all of us, not. So it's not a request from the Housing Society. I'm sure they would love it. But when we're talking twenty-five thousand dollars a year in four years, that's hundred thousand, like that, that builds up fast. I, I need a business plan. I need a, I need a project charter. I need, I need, I need a reserve policy that says what the source of funding is, the minimum, the maximum, um. I think they'll have application, I think, is the terminology you guys use in reserves, how we apply the reserves. So none of that is in front of us. So this just seems like a, a, a step too far into what we want to do. I, I, I would absolutely support setting up a reserve of twenty-five thousand dollars a year with a proposed policy surrounding that. And maybe not just for the Housing Society, but, um, maybe Homeland could use it. If we were to give Homeland Housing twenty-five thousand dollars more a year, the project on twenty-two St. Thomas would be lower and lower, or would there be more and more units that were affordable? We could give it to. We could give it to Habitat. We could give it to Savita, which is the former, like, I think we need to have absolutely, as a council, have a conversation about how we're going to support affordable housing in our community. But, um, doing a one-off without a conversation with the Affordable Housing Society, um, just seems a little premature at this time. So, Council Hughes, go ahead to close.
Thank you. I just wanted to address a few of the things that were said. Uh, when we changed the hu- funding parameters for the outside organizations, especially the Housing Society, they came to us multiple times and said that they had a concern because they were trying to get money together for the capital. And because we reduced it to where we did, they could not put money aside for capital. They came multiple times last term. And I think that they just gave up, thinking that we were going to address the capital issue at all. So why would they come back again when you have a, a man asking for water and we've said no multiple times? Now, they have come forward and said that they absolutely could use the money, and obviously, we've been to the various fundraisers, and we have seen the people that are impacted, and we have seen the need to have additional housing units. When I look at the people who need this, this, they are often escaping very drastic situations and trying to find a place to get back on their feet. And the gratitude that they have to be able to have a place to still live in St. Albert, they feel safe is immeasurable. Now, I am expecting a policy to come around with the reserve, just like we have with every other reserve. We have a complete policy around the parameters. And I know that administration will bring it forward. So saying I want to state the reserve without parameters would be completely incorrect of an assumption. We are going to have parameters put around this, and we are going to have the reserves come forward next year. And at that time, we can discuss if we want to change in the parameters when it comes forward for discussion. I'm confident that they're probably not going to take out that money in the next two to three months to purchase a new unit. All this does is simply say that we are committed to trying to build additional housing. And yes, there's other places that could also come forward and ask for it, and yes, but we have to choose something. And the challenge you have is if you say twenty-five thousand to just go into air, into any organization that applies. We now have them clung against each other, working against each other to try to get the money. And the rules around this become that much more difficult for them to be able to access it. So the goal is really, the question is, do we want to create additional affordable housing units in St. Albert, or do we not? But the more we say it's open to everybody, the more difficult it is for any of those organizations to actually be able to acquire it. And the one thing we know about the Housing Society is they're not there to make a bunch of money. They're not there to line their own pockets. Everybody who works there is volunteers. They are doing this because they want to help people in St. Albert. And the reason I put this forward was because I think that as a council, we should also take that same level of dedication they have taken and say that we are prepared to put money towards additional units when they have enough money together to buy additional units. And twenty-five thousand's a drop in the bucket. And yes, after four years, it's hundred thousand, but guess what? It's more than a hundred grand to buy a, an apartment. So we're still not even funding a full apartment after four years, but what we are doing is at least moving the needle towards being able to acquire additional units that people in St. Albert desperately need. And so we will have the parameters set up. This will simply be a small annual contribution that they can commit to, as Council Killick said, to let other levels of government know that if they need funding to move to get additional grants, then maybe they can get it from other levels of government, because they know that that will be available to them. And the people who desperately need this will be extremely grateful for what we're doing. This has nothing to do with one organization or the people behind it. This is what the people of St. Albert who need this type of housing and us saying that we pulled a bunch of the money away from you and we did the capital and our operating budgets changeover. And we are committing to putting something towards that capital and not having it dependent upon you figuring out how to get out of your operating. Because we'd like to see additional housing units done, and it does not preclude us from putting money towards Homeland, which we already have. It is not precluding us from having Homeland actually build their forty-six million dollar unit. It's just simply saying that this is a way that we can move that needle forward just a little bit and try to help a family that desperately needs it. Eventually. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Call for the vote? Voting's closed? And that motion fails with Council Brumansky, Hughes, and Killick in support. Alright, we are on to, um, PM eighteen, which is your motion on the housing options for affordability, Council Hughes.
The Plan Zero Zero Nine Housing Options for Affordability and Accessibility is unfunded with a savings of one hundred and twelve thousand five hundred returned to Capital Reserve.
Alright, any questions on this one? There was no backgrounder on this one, was there? I don't think I saw, there wasn't today that I saw. Did you guys see one? Just, just in here, but not on, online, I didn't see. Anyway, that's, I don't really have questions. I see no other questions, Council Hughes, so I will accept your motion. Go ahead.
Sure. Um, really, the challenge with this is it's for an unknown entity of an unknown amount, which will not be enough to actually cover anything if a developer wanted commitments from us. So if a developer wanted, uh, real money from council, we're probably looking at, looking at donations from well over a million to two million dollars. Uh, one hundred and twelve thousand five hundred is pretty much almost nothing. Um, the ability for an organization to get it will be very difficult. And so what we should do is if there is a need that comes forward from an organization, then we give it to them at that time. We have that discussion about what we're prepared to commit. But putting one hundred and twelve thousand five hundred away each year for just the idea of affordable housing. You know, and this one actually has, um, nothing that I can see around the parameters and policy, et cetera, et cetera. None of it. So the idea of putting that forward for just the idea of affordable housing with really a very limited ability for any developers to be able to access it, um, I think is just not the way we need to accomplish our goals of trying to get affordability. That's it. Thanks.
Alright, anyone else on debate? Alright, I'll call for the vote. Voting's closed? And that motion fails with Council Brumansky and Hughes in favor. Um, I think the next one was on consent. It was the, yes, it was moving the one million of uncommitted balance in the stabilization fund as transfers to Capital Reserve. So that was approved on consent. Um, Council Hughes, the Business Process Consulting Regarding Service Place is yours next. Go ahead.
That a business process consultant provided service place for up to one hundred and seventy-five thousand to be funded from the Capital Reserve.
Alright, any questions? Seeing none, go ahead on debate.
So this motion's not specifically to ask for a full-blown audit. It's rather to have a business process consultant bring PRAM forward, which, um, is a different process. Um, I'm hoping that it would be better received from the staff at Service Place. The, um, the business consultant for planning and engineering, which I appreciate was approved last year, is just getting started now. So approving it now does not mean it's going to happen anytime soon. It probably means that it will get started in the next twelve months, if we're lucky. And it will allow the Service Place staff to evaluate, come together like they did for planning engineering, figure out what they think could be the weakest points in their, uh, planning and processes, and then bring in somebody to work with them to figure out how we can become more efficient. And ultimately to, um, improve the working conditions of the staff at the end of the day. So um, this would allow them probably to look at two areas, maybe three. It would be of their decision of what they want to do with it, and it would allow, it would allow the staff to, um, work to further improve their efficiencies. But one of the reasons I brought this forward is I asked about the Service Place deficit. And this, it was written in the backgrounder that we can reduce it by another hundred and eighty thousand, but that staff using their current skill sets can't take it down any more than that in the future. Which is why I said, okay, then let's give you guys outside help and see if we can do something differently. It's not about the intention of staff. It's just about, you know what, at some point, using what we currently have. This is as good as we can do it. If we allow them to have outside assistance, this is not done through auditing directly. It's done as a collaborative process, and it will allow them to say, you know what, maybe we can do something a little bit differently. And we can, again, get that number down as low as possible for taxpayer subsidy. The so when I, I look at this, the last time that this was reviewed in any capacity was in two thousand and eight, one year after it opened. So we are looking at, what, fifteen years, going on sixteen years. Basically, the life of the entire facility. We have never actually had an audit review done or any type of business process review done to see if we can improve the taxpayer obligations for this facility. So at this point, just judging from how built, and my ability to get nose all the way through, I'm not optimistic, so I won't waste a bunch more time, but I can tell staff, I tell you guys that if we were to invest in this, it will come back in dividends. And it will help the users, it will help the subsidization of the taxpayers, and it will also help the staff, because they'll be able to do their job that much better. And so that is why I'm suggesting that we just go forward with this and let them go forward. I think that if you ask planning and engineering, I don't think that they have looked at this to date as, uh, argumentative or confrontive. This has been a collaborative process for them to figure out, yeah, this is how, some areas that we could work on, and we'd love to get some input. And that's what this would do as well. That's it.
Anyone else on debate? Seeing no one, I will call for the vote. Voting's closed? And that motion fails with Council Brumansky and Hughes in support. Uh, the last operate, or capital motion we have today is the White Spruce Forest Anti-Slip Safety Strips. Um, so I'll get you to read it. And Nellie, I know she wants to, I think, make an amendment. So go ahead.
That anti-slip safety strips and temporary directional signs are added to the White Spruce Forest for a total of up to thirty-three thousand dollars to fund both elements. And I'm just going to take it to change it to be funded from the current capital project.
Changing the funding source?
Yeah, because it says in the backgrounder that there's enough money in the current capital project to pay for it.
Alright, and I'm going to go to you, Counselor Jolly, because you said you might have an amendment.
Yeah, I just want to amend it to remove this, the anti-slip safety strips.
Okay, do we have an idea that might change the price?
Yeah, it, it goes down to, it, it'd still be within the current budget, but I think it goes down to three thousand or something like that.
But that, that's fairly close. Actually, we just asked, I'll get the quick math, but I believe that takes away a good portion of the funding.
So ju- this-
We, we actually have Danielle, who can probably comment in more specifics than that online.
Okay, thanks, Danielle.
Thanks for the question, Council Jolly. That would take the total value down to a thousand dollars. Um, there's a small fee for labor, but maybe a thousand dollars for signage, and then we would take that out of the existing charter based on the motion you've just made.
Okay, that's, that was my only question. Um, okay, well, so when we get to the motion, I'll, I'll come to you for an amendment, Council Jolly. Is there any que- oh, questions on the actual motion? Go ahead.
Well, now that-
Or even the amendment?
Yeah, I'm just going to be on, I was just going to speaker on the anti-slip, but I don't know when to talk about question.
You have questions, just questions. Ask anything you want.
Well, I just see in the background right now that, um, we don't have that enhanced service on any of our other wooden decking, um, within our current parks, and it was an example of Brayside, which I'm familiar with, Bless, which I'm familiar with, and Oakmont, which I'm not quite so familiar with. But, um, is there any other, do we, other than the ones that we've just installed in the, uh, Gray Nun's White Spruce Forest, do we have any other, um, wooden decking?
Please go ahead, Daniel.
Uh, thanks for the question, Council Mackay, and I'll ask Ms., um, Wild to, to chime in as well. So we do have a number of wooden platforms, of which you've named a few of them, and I think she can name you a couple others. If, if you wanted to just hang on, she can provide you with others that we have within our inventory. Go ahead, Ms. Wild.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Danielle. Uh, to, to Council Mackay, um, we do have a few, um, small foot bridges. Um, so Oakmont would be the blaze or the Oakmont pedestrian bridges wood ducted. Um, so we do have a number of them throughout the city, not, not a huge number, but, um, more than just the ones that exist at Gray Nun's. Gray Nun's are the only formal boardwalks. The other ones are more viewpoints and bridge structures.
Yeah, and they've been in place for quite a number of years now, I would imagine. I mean, I know we replaced Bless five, six years ago, or, or contributed to Bless replacing theirs. Um, the Brayside ravine ones been there quite a while. Have, have we had any reports of people slipping? Injuries, any litigation against the city in relation to slips or falls?
Uh, thanks for the question, Council Mackay. So we don't have any record of any, um, incidents on those, on those, um, those wooden structures as well as any, um, complaints as, as of right now. Um, I'm not sure if, um, Ms. Wild or if, um, Ms. Stewart from Pu- Public Operations have any other information, but we don't have any record of any complaints or concerns at this time.
I have nothing further.
Okay, thanks. Is, would it be administration's opinion then that if this was to pass, we would have to put anti-slip rubber matting throughout the entire, like, that one new deck? Then potentially you have to also put that whole, um, anti-slip mats, the entire length of the wood, wood sidewalks as well? Would that be the, is that your reading of this motion?
Madam, go ahead.
Thank you for the question, Council Mackay. Um, as the motion reads, we do understand the intention is just to, uh, look at the wooden deck structures at Gray Nun's White Spruce Park. Um, as per the backgrounder that was provided, we would suggest, um, if it's a concern in Gray Nun's, that it is likely a concern in other areas, and we would want to assess, um, whatever measures we put in place, see if they are effective, um, if they're addressing um, a concern that administration was not aware of, and then potentially bring, uh, forward information to council on, um, enhanced service levels on other similar wooden deck structures. Um, but our understanding of the intent at this time is just to implement it at Gray Nun's.
And if I can just add to that, Council Mackay, we continue to watch for public feedback as well as our safety assessments on sites. We'll continue to, to do all that normal rigor, um, as we move forward.
Yeah, but I mean, if I remember the construction of both the deck and then the si- uh, the wooden sidewalks, they're individual boards. So would you put uh, anti-slip on each individual board, or would you have to roll out anti-slip like, almost like a carpet?
Uh, Council Mackay, we would, um, we've done some preliminary investigation on best practices within the, the budget timelines. Um, but we'd actually go back and do a little bit more research before we figured that out. Um, so we've priced it um, based on our best available information, but we just need to go and do a little bit more research before we actually, um, implement.
Alright, thank you.
Council Broadhead?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, it's, does the city of St. Albert have a policy statement of around sidewalks, wooden, I, I'm, I'm reading that we don't. It would seem to me that, uh, the governance motion here would be that we actually develop anti-slip governance policy so that when we install stuff like this, that it's automatically applied. What's your reaction to that? Or do we have such a policy in place?
If I could, perhaps I'll let, uh, Reckon Parks initially comment, and then I'd ask Donnie George from an engineering standard perspective more broadly, uh, to chime in. Thank you.
Yeah, that's, thanks for the question, Council Broadhead. That was going to be my response, is we have engineering standards that we follow when we build, um, recreation amenities, and so those are built into those, those processes when we have something that's an enhanced service level perhaps. Um, so as of right now, we don't have an engineering standard around this on wooden structures, but I'll look to Ms. George to, to add to that.
I have nothing further. Toward our standard doesn't take care of that additional requirement at present.
Do you know of any other, uh, municipalities? I mean, we're not the only one putting in wooden walkways, uh, that have standards. Like, I've seen non-slip uh, patches on, uh, on wooden walkways in other communities. Uh, I just don't know if there's a policy associated with it, or if it's site-dependent.
Maybe I can start, and Donnie, if, if you want to pipe in. Um, so for, I guess for us, we don't have a standard right now. I would say we continue to watch best practice around the region. Um, I don't know that we've seen a best practice that indicates this is a necessity at this time. Um, and also based on our assessments and our, and our, um, reporting of any incidents, that's not what we would understand to be the best practice, but as typical, we, we look out and reach out to other municipalities as we do further research on amenities like this to see if that is a necessity. We would then look at it to a future service enhancement and bring it back to council in that manner. And Ms. Wild or Donnie, please feel free to add to that.
Nothing further to add, other than we looked, looked at Edmonton. Edmonton doesn't have that standard either. So to Danielle's point, we'll be, you know, looking at best practices across the region, and we'll bring it back as an amendment to the standard as an additional service.
Thank you.
Council Killick?
Uh, just want to-
Just want to confirm that we already have signage at. Hogan Road slash Rankin Drive on the fence, uh. That, that says. You know, the road is closed, but White Spruce Forest is that way and, and you can stand there at that. Gate and see. The, the other directional signage, so uh, you, you can, you can clearly see White Spruce Forest. From that sign. So I'm, I'm a little bit lost as to. What other signage we need and on our social media and, and when you Google White Spruce Forest, it actually says, you know. Don't, don't use this parking lot, use the access over at uh. Through Lions, Lions Park, forgot the name of the park that's over there now, but um, too many parks. So I, I'm, I'm just. Curious as to where we would put additional signage that there already isn't signage that clearly says. And, and you can see it as well.
I can jump in because you guys, this is my thing, not yours to admin, so I, I don't need you guys to defend my motion. Um, so I'll give, I'll put you off the hook, okay? Um, when you were coming down and there's that construction site and there's the apartments. And when you, as a person, if I realize what we're telling people to go over the river around the bend and come in through Riel. Not everybody wants to make the trek just they can come. And so they get onto that road and there's nothing to even indicate that this is the way to the White Spruce Forest unless you already know you're there. And if you need there, you obviously don't need the sign, but we do have a chain link fence that basically makes you think that you shouldn't be going on that road. And we have on-street parking and we have nothing to indicate that you can actually just enter the park that way. I realize there is no parking lot there right now, but there is certainly an easy way to access it from there without having to walk extra ten minutes and park in Riel. So the intention is to put up something, doesn't have to be large, the desk says Spruce Forest. Go to your left. Walk three hundred meters, you're, you're there, because when I've talked to people and I've met people there and I said, I'll meet you, and they're like, I can't find it. I'm just seeing a dead end road, a lot of cars parked, but I don't, unless you know it's there, you don't know it's there. So that is the intention, is to put up something to acknowledge at the end of that road that's currently barricaded off that accesses the public. There is something that says you made it. Yes, you can go this way. We might prefer you go the other way, but you're still allowed to go that way. You won't die going on gravel for ten, for a hundred meters. That's the intention behind the motion.
Well, if I may, counselor, that there already is a sign on that chain link fence saying. The park is there.
I'm thinking of something from the road because the chain link fence is also still recessed. And when, soon as you see a chain link fence, you don't immediately, when you see a sign, your first thing isn't, let's read it and see if I should be going around it. Your first thought is, I'm probably something that says, don't go on here, we might kill you. But, so it's just something from the street, just something easily accessible as you're driving, that you're like, yeah, okay, I got it, let's go park. And then come back. That was the intention behind it. It doesn't have to be fancy. It just is, um. When I've seen other parks, other places, when you have to go down a street to get to the park, often at the very beginning of that intersection, there is some kind of more of a formal sign that says. If you go down this road, you will find a park. And right now what we have is if you get on this road, you will find a chain link fence that will block you from going further, that will discourage you from thinking you're at the park. So that's, that's my intention of that. Does that answer your question?
It, it does, but it still leaves me wondering, as, as I've driven over there the other day. There still is a sign on that chain line fence.
You know, if you don't think we need it, you're welcome to vote no.
I, I'm just. Trying to clarify.
It will not be my first note tonight. So, um. You know, as you wish.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm actually just trying to go for a twenty-two point hat trick tonight, so. I think written number, okay, let's go ahead.
Thank you.
Any questions further on Counsel Hughes' motion before I accept it? And then I'll go to Counsel Jolly. Seeing none, um, I am going to accept it. And before we get into debate, I'll, I'll get you to move your amendment, Counsel Jolly. Have you sent it in?
Um, just that anti-slip safety, safety strips and is removed from the motion.
Exact motion again.
So. The number could be changed, it doesn't really.
So your motion is that the words quote. Anti-slip safety strips is removed, so it would read that temporary directional signage is added.
Yeah.
Okay. Guys have that?
Yes, so we do have a motion ready for you, Counsel Jolly. We're just gonna put it in the chat for you and then we'll put it up on the screen here.
Yeah, it says be amended by deleting the phrase anti-slip safety strips. And. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, you want to read it in?
Sure, that PM twenty-four or thirty-five be amended by deleting the phrase anti-slip safety strips and deleting the phrase to fund both elements. And amending the funding amount to one thousand dollars.
All right.
Point of clarification.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
That's okay. I was just saying, we've had the most conversation and time spent on three thousand dollars versus big. Go ahead, Counsel.
Just from a procedural perspective, if, um, if this motion fails, we go back to the original.
Yep, yep. Okay, go ahead, Counsel Jolly.
Thank you. I'm all in favor of refinding signage. It's a mess down there, so thank you. Um, this is, that's a, this is a great way to fix that. Um, I, I'm opposed to the safety strips. I, I don't think we need to be starting down the road of bubble wrapping the city. And, and I, I'm concerned that this is, that is what they would do to, to keep that in there. So that's the reason for this.
All right, anyone else on debate? On the amendment? Go ahead, Counsel Hughes.
Thank you. So the rationale behind the safety strips, if you ask me if I had to pick a favorite child, that would be the one over the directional signs even. Because when you're trying to go over, some of those bridges and boardwalks are quite long. And if it's frusted or icy, it's just extremely slippery and there's no alternate way to get around it. And I'm not suggesting we lay a carpet down. I'm just suggesting that, you know, if you. Even if you do every other board and you just have something a little bit there, so that if you go slip, you don't just keep on going and find out what it looks like from the ceiling. Um, or from the, from the sky, so. It, I don't know why we don't have them and all of them as a standard. Um, I appreciate the fact that administration is going back to reconsider this. But. If we're going to have a park that has primarily, um, well, has quite a few. Uh, wooden, um, bridges and boardwalks for us, for them to use. And we're expecting it to be used year round, then we should be allowing it to be accessed in a safe manner, as simple as that. This isn't a very expensive. Um. Request, but it does make a big difference for people when they get to the bridge and then they, the words now what? Come in because you just don't know how you're going to get over it because it's frosty and it's slippery and there's literally nothing that you can do to try to keep yourself upright. So. Perhaps it should be on the bless platform as well, et cetera. Um, I don't know if the bless platform is being used a lot in the winter, staff can let me know, but I do know that the White Spruce Forest. The intention is to be able to use that trail year round, and that just means that we need to be able to access the trail safely year round. And it, I'm hoping it will be done in a tasteful manner, um, and not excessive. But that does not preclude the fact that we want to make sure that people regardless where they are on the trail. Don't uh, slip, fall down, break something, and then. Our defense was, well, you never complained before. So that's it.
All right. Anything to close, Counsel Jolly?
Nothing further.
All right, uh, call for the vote on the amendment? Uh, the amendment fails, and so we're back to the main motion, Counsel Hughes, go ahead.
Uh, I think I already talked about that, and I think I've already explained the directional signs, so. You know, if somebody has something else they want to say, I'm gonna stop talking.
All right, anything else further on this motion? All right, call for Counsel Kilik?
Yeah, just to say that, uh, as I had spoken earlier, there is a sign there, it is visible. You pull a U-turn, you can't miss it. You can look right down the road. Um, and you can see the, see the park. Long-term, this will be addressed, um, probably next year, the year after, when the developer. Um, develops that land and finishes the road and brings us proper access to that site. Uh, the, on, on the anti-slip strips, um. The, the boardwalk, when, when we say bridges, we tend to think of something with a kind of a hump in them that it, that are slippery. The, the boardwalk there is all level. It, it's not actually, uh, I've walked it many times with my grandkids and. So there, there's no handrails either. Um, but that's, that's the intention. It, it's so you feel like you're in nature. And I'm just not sure that. Um. Anti-slip strips are, are needed on level. Uh, boardwalks, as I said, they're not, not bridges that go up and down in a slope. So I, I, I see this as a very. Operational, um, as opposed to kind of a strategic direction that council should be. Should be looking at, so I, I'm not supportive of, obviously you can tell by my comments, I'm not supportive of this.
Council Ramaski?
Thank you. Um, I'm willing to support this motion and if, you know, if it can prevent one person from slipping and no one finding them in the bush. Because I mean, you're, you're in an isolated area when you're there by yourself. Um, that's a good thing. Uh, the ask isn't very much. Uh, a sign of direction is always handy and. We can always change it to a parking lot sign and save the same poll at the end. So I mean, I, I don't see the ask in this being. Uh, a large amount for the safety factor. And the other thing that came to mind for me is. We do have the imprint of the, you know, they did the different artistic work in those panels, so I mean, it is a possibility that. It, it's maintaining water in there, or there is a different scenario of why it might be slippery there. So, um, by trying this out, it, it could perhaps fix something that we weren't even aware of and again. Uh, prevent someone from slipping is at the end of the day, so thank you.
All right, I see no more people wanting to weigh in, go head to close, Counsel Hughes.
Yeah, the fact that there is no guardrails and so many, just absolutely. Shows us the need to have something there to make sure someone doesn't slip because there's nothing to catch them. Other than the, uh, the boardwalk itself when you slip and fall. So, um, and if you don't have to be in a slope to slip, you can be on completely flat ground and it's nicely polished with frost and. There you go. So I, I just look at this and, and think that this is a simple solution. And for the people who do not slip and fall, they will thank us a great deal at the time of. Thank you.
Call for the vote? Voting's closed. And that motion passes with Counsel Jolly, Kilik and Makai opposed. That's the last of our capital. Um, let's keep going. Municipal operating is PM twenty-four. Uh, oh, this is mine. Oh, sorry, it's PM twenty-six. Why do I always do that? Or zero-six. All right, I'll read it in. That the city matches the downtown business improvement area operating budget up to fifty thousand at a hundred percent for two thousand twenty-four. Seventy-five percent in two thousand twenty-five and fifty percent in two thousand and twenty-six. Plus an additional ten thousand for the same three years in support of the Snowflake Festival and the funds come from the tax base. Any questions? Counsel Ramaski?
Thank you. Uh, questioning, uh, Madam Mayor on her motion, the, um. The amount of fifty thousand, is that in addition to that? Uh, the amount that administration will be spending on the BIA Improvement Area Administration per year?
You mean the in-kind?
Yes.
Uh, no, I, I saw that as a, um, as a, as. Just cash towards their operating budget. So if, if administration still wants to do in-kind, they can. But this was to supplement their. Their bank account essentially.
Okay, and the in-kind will come out of the taxpayer budget then?
Whatever it does now.
Okay, thank you. And then the, um, the, the ten thousand, I was just curious, um. How you came up with the number of ten thousand?
Uh, I think it's sort of in line with what we've done in the past. I think we gave fifteen thousand this year. But I, I didn't want to give that annually. I feel like ten thousand is. Plenty. Um, I feel like this isn't an event. The Snowflake Festival is an event that all St. Albertians like, so you know, all St. Albertians kind of as coming from the tax base could support. But I also feel like the downtown businesses need to have some skin in the game as well.
Okay, and if the downtown businesses are not running the Snowflake Festival, would it not just come out of an events ground by whatever group is running the Snowflake?
If they don't run the Snowflake Festival, they don't get the ten thousand dollars.
So the ten thousand is for whoever runs the festival then?
No, it's for the BIA.
But they don't.
If, if they don't run it, they don't get the money, yeah.
Okay. I thought there was an understanding that they wouldn't be running it next year, but I could be wrong about that, so, um.
I don't think we've gotten that far yet.
Okay, I have a couple more questions. I'll let others speak first, thank you.
Counsel Hughes?
Yeah, so we, you want to take, um. Fifty percent for the next three years, but then. The, the expected operating is significantly less is what they are doing. So are you prepared to modify the budget to reflect? The actual costs, or are we actually setting aside fifty thousand, but realizing that we're probably only going to get twenty-four for example, the first year?
I think it depends on their operating budget. So they haven't, as you read the memo today, they haven't discussed a budget because they're waiting for this motion to pass. So their budget might be twenty-four thousand dollars this year, might be more next year.
So the intention from the DBA was to always see how much money we're going to give them?
Whatever their budget is this year. Hundred percent match up to fifty thousand dollars. So if their budget's fifty, they get fifty. If their budget's seventy-five thousand, they get fifty. If their budget's twenty-four thousand, they get twenty-four from us. Next year, whatever their budget is, seventy-five percent.
Okay, but the taxpayers was to be paying fifty because that will be set aside.
Yes, I guess so, yeah.
Okay, and I guess the other question with the ten thousand dollars per year in funding. Um, for the Snowflake is, why don't we just have whoever's doing it apply for it through the community events grants and not? Just simply give them ten thousand dollars a year?
Quite honestly, I don't know if anyone's going to take it over next year other than the BIA. But we'll cross that bridge next year and we come to it.
Okay. Okay, no more questions.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, I don't have a lot of debate arguments on this one. It's just. Kind of said it in the, in the newspaper the other day, that we have this brand, brand new business improvement area. It's new concept in the city of St. Albert. I, I know they were going to start with a very modest budget. And, and that was part of the, you know, when they went around to the businesses and got signatures, it was going to be a modest budget. And I just want to make sure that this is, is successful and so to. Help that, I don't want to, I can never ensure it, but if, to help it be successful, I thought we could help them with the first three years of operations. Um, through this motion. Counsel Kilik?
Yeah, I think, uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think the. Whole concept of the Downtown Business Association. Uh, fits nicely with one of council's strategic priorities and that is. Um, the, the whole development of our downtown and downtown vibrancy. Um, I'm pleased to be the council representative on, on downtown vibrancy and this fits nicely in there. Um, they are a startup group and as all startup groups go, they are. I think they, their approach was, was smart that they started off with a small funding amount from the businesses. To kind of get them going and, and start it up. Um, if we can match that funding and help them out. Uh, it, it supports council's priority of downtown revitalization. And this is a, is a good, uh, way to help supplement them without burdening the businesses. It really just gets them off the ground and up and running. They, um, will be having their first. Uh, functional meeting in the new year and, uh, but, but this is, this is a good way. It, it helps them get started and it also kind of weans them off of it over the, it's only for three years. It decreases over time, so they know they have to become more efficient at raising their own funds. Um, and, uh, and, and being successful in doing that. So. This is a really good way to. Support, uh, our downtown Business Association startup and it is so vital to. That whole. Council priority of downtown. And it is so vital to that whole uh council priority of downtown vibrancy. Um, the Snowflake Festival funding. I is, it is really an event for all residents of St. Albert. So for council to get behind this and provide additional support. The, the Snowflake Festival is not just about kind of businesses. It's, it's ten thousand, potentially ten thousand residents that uh will come downtown for this, this event. Uh, with, with the good weather looking like it this year, might be more than ten thousand. But um, uh, we're gonna run out of dilly bars real quick if, if it's more than, than ten thousand. Uh, so this, this additional support to the Snowflake Festival uh is um. Is, is really uh, I think significant as well. It's, it's a city of St. Albert residence event. I don't say city of St. Albert as we are running it, but it's uh, it's an event for all residents. Um, I, I'd just like to mention too that if I looked at the one twenty-fourth street light up event. Basically two blocks long from a hundred and ninth down to a hundred and seventh. And the city of Edmonton supported that to the tune of thirty thousand dollars. Ten thousand dollars here for something that is much larger and is a great event for so many residents. Uh, is uh, I, I, I think really good way to show our support. And I absolutely support this both from a good idea, but also from being directly involved in this year's uh planning.
Thank you, Council Bermansky.
Thank you. I think as um council, you know, we're all, we're all loving the idea of having a vibrant downtown and we're all in favor of events. And we all love when we can get the public out there um for any kind of events that come forward. Um, the problem I have with this one is that um, you know, the business development group is just, you know, getting their feet. They haven't even had a, you know, a budget meeting or whatever. And at the start of this, it, it, you know, we argued on both sides that the um, you know, what the businesses would contribute in comparison to what it's costing administration to manage that, those contributions, which is more money spent on commission on, on administration than the group is actually contributing. So there's, we're just getting past the administration part and, and trying to find the ground for it. And now we're, you know, we're saying, oh, we're going to um, in this motion, we're going to just throw you more money and, and. Uh, the thing is, we don't, those are just random numbers. We don't know how they'll relate to the budget. Um, I appreciate everything that the downtown businesses do. There's a great group of people like, you know, trying to, to get things going there and such. But there's a lot of other businesses in the city too. And the fact that we're spending money on it, administration, the other businesses are paying higher taxes and we're not, you know, we're not giving them extra money or deciding what amounts to contribute to their business as all businesses are having, you know, a tough time currently, some more so than others. And um, the Snowflake Festival, again, a hundred percent behind, I can see uh, you know, supporting that by whichever group decides to run it in a community grant. But to give it to the business group when they, they, you know, there's no guarantee they want it either. So um, I think that this motion is premature before we have their budget and their intent and their commitment. And uh, again, um. We're willing to support the, the whole Snowflake Festival, but giving specific businesses money to succeed in something that hasn't started yet just doesn't make sense to me. So I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Council Hughes?
Uh, thank you. I, I think that it's, this is just premature, but we need to actually see their budgets, see their plan and see how they, and if they even need any money from the city before we just. Throw away thirty, fifty thousand dollars a year when in the background, it says that they probably won't even need fifty thousand a year. And let them have their meeting. And then if they have an idea that they think they need a top-up from the city, give it to us then. And then we can say, oh, you need ten thousand dollars. We understand what it is. We understand what the value will be for it. And we'll, at least we can explain to taxpayers why we're giving them taxpayer dollars for an organization. Right now, we're literally just blindly throwing fifty thousand dollars towards an idea. No parameters around it, no metrics about what will be achieved. And a likelihood that we're putting fifty thousand dollars towards something that, when the number that is suspected will actually be less than even requiring that. But we're still committing taxpayer dollars to that level. So my recommendation is let's, let's just wait and see what they come back with, with their annual meeting. Come back with their plan of what they wanna do and come back and determine if they actually need it. And as far as the Snowflake Festival goes, we have a community events grant. Whoever does this is, will have a lot more time to prepare and they can apply for the community events grant. This isn't about whether we want to be there or not. This is about whether or not we just have them go through the regular process. We, we did not go through the process because that, there was a time crunch this time. But whoever's taking it over can apply for it and I'm sure they will be supported at that time. But we don't have to just say we're giving it to the DBA when DBA may not be the ones even organizing it. So um, this is just, in both cases, it's premature. That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else on debate? Seeing nothing, I can't say it better than Council Kilik is, so I'll call, didn't, so I'll call for the vote. Voting's closed? Nope. Who do we need? Council Hughes? Okay, now it's closed. And that motion passes, sorry, it goes so fast, with Council Bermansky and Hughes opposed. Uh, Ken, you are into motion PM zero eight, your MES officers. And then we'll take a break.
Thanks, Drew. I have a couple of questions. You want me to read it in though first?
Read it in first, please. Yep.
Uh, that municipal enforcement's units authorized strength be increased by two municipal enforcement officers, including all associated costs with operating costs to be funded from the twenty twenty-four. Uh, tax base and any required capital costs through the capital reserve.
All right, you have some questions of, of your own motion?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, no, I, questions that I hopefully will clarify something.
Okay.
Uh, I'll just wait. Um, in a, uh, the um, the backgrounder identified that it would be administration's preference that if these two positions were approved, one would become a, a supervisor. Um, I just want clarification that the, this is, we're talking about a working supervisor here. We're not talking about somebody who just basically. Um, we call them skinny belts where I come from or carpet cops. Uh, they are actually members that potentially could go out, respond to calls as well as the uh, their frontline officers. Is that correct?
Yep. We've got Director Emergency Services. I'll let him give the final answer on that. But yes, you are correct.
Excellent. Thank you for the question, Council Mackay. Um, sergeants are working supervisors, yes. Uh, currently the city of St. Albert Municipal Enforcement Services has one supervisor, one sergeant. Uh, to ten frontline staff members or, or regular uh, general duty members, if you will. Uh, so when we talk about span at control, obviously that's way out of span at control. And the current sergeant right now spends about eighty percent of their time uh reviewing files and other administrative duties uh in support of those frontline officers. The recommendation in the motion that was given by administration was that one member or one of the two members being requested would be a sergeant simply to help, one, alleviate some of those duties from the sergeant already in place. Two, uh, to help with span and control so that there's more direct supervision for those officers that are on the front line. So one to five, which is in the ICS world optimum. Um, with respect to boots on the ground, uh, we're comfortable in saying that we would be about a point five for each sergeant. So this ask being for two members, if one was hired as a supervisor or sergeant would work out to be about one point five members. On patrol and then that sergeant would be approximately point five in the office, if that makes sense?
Yeah, no, that, that's, that's kind of what I'm getting at in relation to the fact you would actually increase the availability of time, not only to be able to be supervising, but actually be available for on the street supervision too. So instead of that eighty percent just doing administrative duties, that would decrease down to fifty percent thereby increasing the amount of time that they'd be able to be out on the. Doing proactive, meeting the community, uh, being involved in other, other roles and functions that they don't currently have right now. Even though, even though we add additional capacity, if we just had the two frontline members, but we're still adding capacity by having. If, if it's uh administration's recommendation, if this is approved, that it would be a sergeant, we would still gain additional capacity.
That is correct.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that was clarified. Yeah, that can, um, what are our current shift times?
Uh, I'm actually going to, excellent question. I'm actually going to ask that Aaron Geisberg, the manager of policing services, uh, ask, answer that question for you as he's directly overseeing those shifts. Aaron?
Thank you for the question. Our general duty hours of service, uh, Monday through Friday is uh, seven thirty in the morning till nine thirty at night. Uh, on the weekends, it is seven thirty in the morning till six PM uh at night. And then our traffic services, eh, there's only two officers and it varies, but our, our day shift is typically six AM till four thirty PM. And then an evening shift from ten thirty AM until nine PM. And there, there's a mix of days uh and evenings both throughout the week as well as on weekends. And then there are some uh opportunities and flexibilities within those schedules in order to ensure that we meet um, certain community events or certain special pre-blind operations.
But would uh, the additional capacity of one officer or one sergeant, one officer, would that, could that allow you to move into weekends, longer hours? Um, I'm just to, we just talked about downtown vibrancy. Potentially there'd be an opportunity to increase the hours on the weekend when we would see more events or see more people downtown?
Yes, yes, certainly. I guess if, if the, the motion passes and there is an increase of, what we would do internally is, is have a review of calls for service and that proactive. Needs um, and then the type of service that, that is most desired. And then look at making sure that that officer is placed in, in that position that is the most effective, efficient use. But certainly an opportunity for, for potentially increased hours um over the weekends. Um, or, or there's also other uh things that can be looked at in terms of efficiency of, of officers uh time. So if you specialize in certain areas such as property complaints, things of that nature, you may be able to uh create some, some proactive efficiencies in other areas. Long way of saying, yes, we'd have to do a review.
Okay, no problem at all. Uh, last time that we had any in, in, increase in our authorized positions?
Uh, I don't know that exact. Date. I'd have to get back on that one, but I wanna say it was probably twenty seventeen, twenty sixteen maybe when uh an MES officer was added. Could even be a little bit earlier than that. Could be twenty fifteen.
Yeah, it wasn't in my time on um council, so it would have had to occur before twenty seventeen. So, okay, that was all my questions. Thank you very much.
Council Kilik also has some questions. Go ahead.
I, I wasn't fast enough to hit my uh withdrawal. My, mine was to say, when, when was it last? When did we last augment our, our MES officers?
Okay. No other questions, Council Kilik? I accept your motion. Go ahead.
Uh, I mean, obviously this is around the fact that we, we've just had a long debate in relation to uh uh, increasing the authorized strength of our RCMP detachment from seventy members to seventy-five members. But realizing that we are in a severe staffing crunch and some challenges um. Where um, you know, we had to use this as a strategy to increase our authorized strength thereby increasing the actual number of hard vacancies. Because not to rehash the, all the arguments, but that was one of the only ways that we could uh have some influence on, on the number of officers we have working on the street. However, increasing the um number of, you know, civil enforcement officers is actually a local uh response and a means of actually uh accomplishing uh a little bit more in relation to being um proactive. And not only our uh calls for service, but as you heard through some of my questions, some of the availability uh around maybe some of our hotspots that we've. Starting to see now, we've, we're talking about downtown vibrancy. Um, I would like to see a little bit more increased visibility in our downtown and in our trail system. Because I mean, we, we've all received complaints uh, um, some, some, uh, I guess, social disorder. Uh, uh, speeding vehicles in, in, inattentive uh, uh, kind of attention to some of our uh pedestrians and other users of the trail system. The other thing that I, you know, I have to point out is, is uh, you know, traffic enforcement is kind of near and dear to my heart. And I've seen, and if you look at the quarter two stats that we've received from the RCMP, we're down by numerous percents. Like almost two hundred and twenty-two percent in relation to some of our traffic enforcement. And uh, a lot of that goes to the ability that the RCMP no longer have because in, in their staffing crunch, they had to collapse actual units. So that they could be able to respond to the twenty-four, seven emergency calls. So really what this allows us not only is a local solution, but it also allows us to actually put the right kind of right response in the right time. So what I mean is, is we always, we don't always need an RCMP officer to respond to some of these calls. We can accomplish it much better, faster and even cheaper or in less inexpensively by uh having one of our own MES officers. And I've guessed, and then lastly, I guess in wrapping up uh my opening comments is, is um, of note, you know, it was in the backgrounder. But when we approved that council policy, see PS dash zero two on community policing. We um, we recognized that the city would endeavor to resource one of our MES officers for every five thousand. If we would have followed that formula, we would already be at fourteen MES officers. So really this only gets us up to uh thirteen. So um, I'm gonna end my comments and wait, but uh, I think this just is all about really improving the safety and response to our residents and it's a local solution to a very difficult problem.
Uh, Council Jolly, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to add that I'm very supportive of this motion. Thank you for bringing it forward. Um, particularly relating to, to Mr. Cook's comments about span of control. Um, when you're supervising ten people, we, we know that that, that is not going to result in the best outcomes. Um, so, so helping with that ratio, I think will absolutely help with the quality of service delivery in St. Albert. And you know, we know that as we grow as a municipality, we're going to have to add uh positions like these. Um, so thank you for being, bringing this forward. That's all I have.
I see no more comments. Council Mackay to close?
No, I made uh without, I, I mean, I guess, um, the only thing I would say is uh, just wanna consider and say, yeah, thank you for those comments, uh, Council Jolly. I think one of the important things is we've noticed in addition, and I focused on traffic enforcement, but we've asked our municipal enforcement officers to do more and continue to do more as our community has continued to grow and some of our bylaws have changed. And so um, all we're, all this will do is kind of allow our officers to catch up. And potentially they need some more catching up if we start to follow our policy.
All right, call for the vote. Voting's closed? That motion passes by majority with Council Bermansky and Hughes opposed. All right, I think it's, did I say we'll take a break after this? All right, let's take a break. I think everybody wants a break. Um. Fifteen minutes, so it's twenty-two now. We'll come back at uh, three fifty-five. Sorry, Sean, ready? Counsel Jolly, you with us?
I am.
Awesome. Okay. We are on. Motion six point three postpone motion twenty two, which is mine. So my motion says that. The one F T E diversity inclusion advisor business case for ninety four thousand, six hundred and thirty three dollars. Be funded in two thousand and twenty four from the growth stabilizers reserve with the intent that prior to the hiring of an ongoing staff resource. Up to the first year funding be utilized towards the development of a diversity, inclusion and equity strategy. By the minute method deemed most appropriate by the C I O. And that the two thousand and twenty five base budget be increased by one thirty five, five eleven. Ongoing to create a permanent inclusive hiring program. Questions? Go ahead, Counsel Mackay.
Really quick, I hope. So this is assuming that. A diversion, a diversity, inclusion and equity strategy is beyond right now the capability. Of something in house. Our current H R or another staff person, we don't have that capability right now.
I can certainly have Ryan still add, but both in terms of capacity, our H R staff are essentially at capacity and some specific. Professional requirements, I would say that is that is true. Ryan, please go ahead and correct me if I'm wrong on that.
Nothing to add, absolutely correct.
So capacity and skill set. Okay.
So was this on your radar at all, Ryan? Were you looking at potentially doing this if not? Obviously, not this year, but. In the near future.
So this was in our developed business cases that due to prioritization just fell a little bit below the line. So this is something that's been on our radar for quite a few years and. Yeah, that got us to today.
Thank you.
Counsel Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to administration, we had a motion earlier where. Future years funding was noted in the in the motion and it was rejected. How is this different?
That one, I believe, is still being voted on in the list. We haven't voted on the one with the.
It was the capital charter for the twenty twenty six funds, and I believe it had to do with. The inability to prove it for ongoing multi-year budgeting is the point.
Which motion was?
You repeat the question?
Yeah, there was. There was a motion that.
It was the the La Combe Lake paving, so it was the hundred and fifty thousand for design and then the one point three million for twenty twenty six. The one point three million was removed because it would have been an approval for a future year's fiscal budget. And in this point of fact, they're asking for twenty five.
You're usually we're voting on one year of capital funding and we're making those recommendations. And in this case. It's operating. So if there is a specification beyond. Another year, we want it to be specified within the motion itself. Does that answer your question, Counsel Broadhead? The intent of most of them is to be funded for one year, but if there is intent more for a future year, that is to be identified in the future year's budget.
So go ahead.
Maybe I can help provide some theory. So the growth stabilization reserve at its essence is the operating fund. If we don't apply it to operating, we use it for capital at here because it's kind of one time money for that year. Once we apply it to operating, then it becomes an on. So it doesn't affect future years. It's not one time funding, I guess.
This is not one time.
No, it's not. So this would this would be ongoing funding.
You're talking about the second part of the motion? Okay.
And just to clarify that additional point, it's the assessment growth that transfer is the assessment growth that we haven't yet applied to business cases. Does that make sense from prior year?
I understand the funding. I just don't understand the notice that, oh, by the way, in twenty twenty five. It's it's a it's a given that that will be funded that way. Because that's, I mean, that's that's just. The annualization of a decision that you've already made, right?
So they the reference to the twenty twenty five is for a different piece. So that's for the actual inclusive hiring program. So there'll be two pieces to it. There'll be the diversity and inclusion advisor as a staff position that's funded from this growth stabilization fund, which is ongoing funding. But then, starting in twenty five, once they develop the whole strategy, then we would implement an inclusive hiring program, which basically helps create. Positions that we can we can use for. Inclusive hiring like.
So are we passing a twenty twenty five budget motion tonight?
We are you're sort of, I mean, you're asking, we're we're telling us now to include it in the base. You would always have the opportunity in the twenty five budget to pull it out of the base. But it's sort of two programs that are kind of linked together would be my understanding of the intent.
Not wanting to to slice legal. Lines here. If if this is fine by you, then it's fine by me. It's just that before we had to remove it from the motion and now we are. Including it. I guess they're two different things. So that's fun.
Counsel Hughes.
Yeah, so this might be to you, Mayor. So. I have a motion about the uncommitted balance, the growth stabilization. So basically, you're just going to take, we have two hundred and eighty thousand, you want to take ninety four of it. Even if this passes, it'd be two ninety four, and then you're but. Are you taking twenty forty four to the two hundred and eighty of the growth stabilization to pay for this?
Well, there's two ninety four available.
Right.
So ninety four this year.
Okay. Okay, so my motion for the two eighty would basically, it doesn't really matter because we can say two eighty.
What's the difference if so if this passes, how does that affect Counsel Hughes's motion?
Yeah, it would decrease the amount available for the transfer effectively.
So basically, it's still raising the taxes by that much because. My motion is to take the full amount off and yours is to take off less.
Less, yeah.
So it will still raise the taxes by ninety four thousand dollars effectively.
Well, that's assuming your motion passes.
Yeah, I'm saying my motion passes. I see. Okay.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none. I'll tell you where this came from. Well, first of all, it came from. The unfunded business cases. So Counsel Jolly asked in a B I R to see all the cases that didn't make the final cut, and this is one of them, as. Mr. Stovall just said. But that doesn't. Demon. This is this, sorry. Ryan Stovall. Scoble, no, Stovall. Never thought of their names that close. Sorry. How about I just go with Ryan? But it was still a project that Mr. Fletcher and the staff deemed important. Of course, they have are faced with super difficult decisions in budget. There is limited dollars from new assessment to fund these projects. There is limited dollars from new assessment to fund these projects. And this one also, it was pointed out when I started asking questions that there was a little bit of concern that we weren't quite ready to dive into the advisor position before we had the strategy. So you'll notice that I've taken what they had proposed, worked with Mr. Fletcher and reworded it. So the first year we would try to get to this diversity inclusion strategy put together that we would contract out. And then after that, we would hire on the position and then fund the inclusive of hiring positions. This, as those have been around for a while, has have will know that this has been a passion of mine. Inclusive hiring is something that my Rotary Club does, that I've attended every Inclusion Alberta Breakfast for the last ten years. I find inclusive hiring super important for our population and and for a corporation. And it's something we have a policy towards. It's just very difficult to do when when poor Ryan's doing it off the side of his desk. And it needs to be funded appropriately. So I don't even know where we were getting the funds in the previous years to hire inclusively. But we do, but we did in the past, and those positions have now been eliminated. And I would like to bring them back. So I get your hesitancy, Councillor Broadhead. But I feel like if this is a step that but it's all quite linked. So I want to just send a signal to Mr. Fletcher and the staff that this is important to council. So diversity, inclusion advisor business case would first of all, do a strategy. Second of all, hire the the resources we need and then fund the permanent inclusive hiring program. So it's kind of all linked together. I will go into yesterday's anti-racism virtual thing. But the question was asked, what is St. Albert doing towards creating a more welcoming, inclusive community, whether it's to fight racism or whether it's to have diversity represented in in our staff, in in our council, in our community, so and and make newcomers feel welcome? And what are we doing for accessibility? So this is something that's important across Canada, and I feel like St. Albert is kind of falling behind in in our approach to it. I sit on the F C M A R E Committee, Anti-Racism Equity and Inclusion Committee. And, you know, when I listen to other communities and how far ahead of us they are, it's it's something I just really want to send a signal to Mr. Fletcher, staff and this whole community that our intent is to be supportive of diversity, equity, inclusion and accessibility in St. Albert. Councillor Jolly, sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm enthusiastically supportive of this motion. Thank you for bringing it forward. I think not only is it the right thing to do, but it brings incredible value when you are working with with diverse persons on staff. So thank you for bringing this forward. That's all I have.
Well, thank you. Councillor Bermanzki.
Thank you. I appreciate the intent in bringing this motion forward, but for my seat, what I'm seeing in in the city of St. Albert is, you know, we need to give ourselves credit where credit is due. I believe that we have a very extremely diverse staff within the city. I think we have, you know, we just did amenities in the front of in the front of City Hall to address many different things. We're constantly looking at diversity and inclusion in in many avenues. And this motion is is making it look like we don't do anything. And the fact is that it's not just having that person, like creating an administration person to focus on this, isn't truly helping on the ground. And when someone comes in to the city of St. Albert to apply for a job, I would like to see that, you know, and I believe that there's no discrimination there. I truly believe that anyone can apply for any job in the city. Anyone in St. Albert can run for city council. There's there's I haven't seen discrimination in the building. And by hiring an administration person to just focus on that, I see it as taking away from those jobs for people that need the jobs in the first place. So more administration instead of just being accepting of all and and remaining as diverse as possible and allowing diversity in every avenue of hiring and process within the city, which we do a fine job of right now. I don't think that having that that I guess focal point of having a staff member dedicated to that is is really helping those individuals that want the respect of being hired no matter who they are, what their needs are. And it's it's I just can't get past that. We're just we're just wanting administration to decide, you know, who who qualifies for equity and and diversity when everyone should should be able to focus on any job they want in the city, any position they want in the city. Our human resources are truly focused on that. And to say we have a position that's just focused to it, but they're really just spending the money on administration doesn't sit well with me and the intent of this. So again, I give kudos to the city for doing a fine job of diversity and inclusion right now. And and that's all I have to say.
Councillor Killick.
Yeah, I think we we've maybe been lucky that in St. Albert diversity is a fact. But inclusion is an act. And we need to take action. This will this bringing this policy on board, developing it, implementing it is really what we need to do. So the inclusion piece and making sure we have have that available is the is the logical next step of putting that into action. And I'm we've spoken about this many times. We've had many discussions around our our naming policy of of the same kind of language. So I'm I'm glad to see that we are taking this step to put this into action.
Anyone else on debate? Councillor Broadhead?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I certainly don't have any problem with your motion. I had the problem with the second-hand motion because I still believe we're passing a twenty twenty-five base budget increase. But having said that, I certainly support the inclusion of the diversity, inclusion advisor for the money appropriate. I think there's a requirement to be overt in how we pursue diversity and inclusion. No matter how well we do it today, we can do it better. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll just add that there was a comment made about helping out on the ground. Well, the hundred and thirteen thousand dollars is going to hire four people who have a difficulty finding jobs anywhere because of various disabilities, et cetera, find employment, meaningful equal-paid appointment. And if if you had chimed into the anti-racism virtual conversation yesterday, you would heard that discrimination and unconscious bias does exist in our community. It just, you know, many of us in on this chambers, actually, all of us are very, very one one race. And so we might not see it, but it does exist in our community. And sadly, we need some help to try to overcome that. So I'll call for the vote. Voting's closed? And that motion passes with Councillor Bermanzki and Hughes opposed. So now Councillor Hughes's next motion will need to be slightly adjusted, right? Okay, so can you put it up on the screen? Oops. Councillor Hughes, you want to read that in?
That the uncommitted balance, the growth stabilization reserve, one hundred and ninety-three thousand, three hundred supplied to reduce the twenty twenty-four tax base.
All right. Any questions on this one?
I have a question, actually.
You have a question?
What's our tax increase at right now?
We are at a five point six percent increase.
We were at five point five when we started, weren't we? And we added the M E S officer for two hundred thousand, and this is another hundred thousand, and it only increased it by point one?
This didn't actually increase it by a hundred thousand because we used the transfer from the growth stabilization reserve. So there's no tax impact. So the right now for the municipal enforcement officer, we had a hundred and eighty-one thousand. So.
Okay. Right. So just reduce the amount. We can reduce it. Okay, no more questions. Thank you.
And I see no other questions. So go ahead.
This is just money that we had left over from last year that we can apply to this. You have to have at least a three and a half percent tax increase, which we will have going forward indefinitely. And we're at five point six percent. That's it.
Any other comments on this one? I'll just point out in the backgrounder, it does talk about just the right backgrounder. That according to policy, when we have, where is it? Councillor Hughes just said it, but when you're over three, three and a half, something like that.
Three point five.
Yep. It is an appropriate use of the reserve. I think this happened last year, did it not? And I think the question was, why didn't you guys just apply yourselves? And you said it takes a council motion, right? So totally totally think this is a good motion. Oh, Councillor Jolly, you have a question?
No, just.
Just debate?
Yeah, we entered into debate?
Yes.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Um, so I'm I'm very cautiously supportive of this. Yes, our our policy says that anything over three and a half percent, we're going to be looking at over three and a half percent for many years to come. And and so we will have to pace ourselves. And and I'm just very, very aware of that as as we do planning for the next five, ten years. That's all. Thank you.
That's a good point. And finance people. Is this policy worth reviewing? I mean, it's it's coming up on five or six years old. I can't even remember. And I know we made some changes since the policy arose and it kind of took away some of the strength of the policy years ago. So I'm just wondering if it's time to review this transfer.
Through to Mayor Herron, it probably is a good idea based on the average tax increases we're looking at.
Yeah.
And the future, there was also in the intent, in addition to being a tax reduction, that it would be used for larger facilities such as a fire hall or service place.
But that we can't do anymore.
That we'd offset these funds to use to offset the operating impacts of those. That was kind of another intent of it, but definitely something we could look at reviewing based on our.
Do you need a council motion to review that or is that on your work plan?
We will review that with the reserve policy in place.
Okay. All right. Dan, you want to?
Yeah, I just the only other thing I wanted to add is I know when we had originally set that three and a half percent threshold, that was prior to us implementing our R M R policy.
Right.
Of one and a half percent. So that's what's, you know, bringing us closer to that three and a half percent every year as well. So that that probably warrants some discussion around that as well.
All right, I'll I'll leave that with you, but I think it's probably overdue because Councillor Jolly brings up a good point. I have no further comments. Councillor Hughes, anything to close?
It's for a few opportunities, this budget tax, reduce the taxes. And it would be lovely if we actually did something to reduce them. People are trying to struggling out there.
All right, is that it?
That's it.
Call for the vote. Voting's closed. That one passes unanimously. All right, Councillor Hughes, six point five is postponed motion sixteen. Go ahead.
That thirty thousand dollars for cemetery sales is unfunded and demands it is unfunded. And demand for sales addressed through reorganization with savings applied to the twenty twenty-four tax base. And can we split off the last part?
Sorry?
Can we split off with savings applied to the twenty twenty-four tax base? So two motions.
So it's kind of hard to vote on the if first one without knowing where the savings is going.
Well, if it doesn't apply to twenty-one four tax base, it would just be put into the growth stabilization reserve according to the policy. So I'm splitting it. That way you can vote on the two concepts separately.
Okay. All right, I'll accept that first part. So.
Mayor, my questions first, if that's okay?
Yeah, we're gonna she just read it in. So we'll go to questions. So absolutely. You got one now?
Yeah, just in the backgrounder, I got the impression that we can't do this administratively. So can someone comment on that?
Mr. Fletcher?
Apologize, we had a sidebar going on here about correcting the record on a comment. Maybe if we could start with that and then I apologize, councillor.
She was just asking her interpretation of the backgrounder said that administratively, this can't be done.
Well, I would respectfully say that the reason we asked for the money is because there was no other elegant solution organizationally.
Okay. Any other questions, Councillor Jolly? I see no more questions. Go ahead, Councillor Hughes.
Sorry, could I just correct? So this thirty thousand that we added was actually included as a base budget, just went into business case. So it would automatically go against the tax rate. So what we have there is.
So I actually don't even need to have the second part at all because it would automatically.
It's still good to to have it in the motion, but that's the appropriate place for it to.
Okay.
So it's as originally proposed.
As originally done.
All right, accept that. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm just going to challenge administration that we can't find somebody else to do this besides the handy bus coordinator if they're swamped. I understand that there's been more sales. I also just think that if we just look through the job function, that we can find someone else to do it without putting an extra thirty thousand dollars of burden on taxpayers. I said before, I mean, if you couldn't find anyone else, there's the ladies at the front desk who are the information people, they can do it. There's two people there that could be split that way. It it could go into the affordable housing portfolio. There's a lot of other areas. I'm not even aware of all of the possible details. I just don't think that this has been exhausted before it came to council and said the handy bus coordinator can't do it. So we're moving it forward. The handy bus coordinator would never be the default that I ever would have given to this position to handle cemetery sales, handy bus coordination. Do not jive. So if that person had a reduced workload, and now that doesn't, great. But I feel like this was almost defaulted into the position without really looking at it. And I feel like just because that person can't do it does not mean another position in the organization can. So I'd just like to challenge administration to find another solution. And and my solution is not to continue to give it to the handy bus coordinator if that person is swamped. But to reevaluate our entire organization and find a different location for that. As I said, the front desk people, there's two people right there that could handle that. That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else on debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that motion fails with Councillor Bermanzki and Hughes in favor. Councillor Hughes, the service place deficit is your next motion.
The projected twenty twenty-four service place deficit is reduced by one hundred and eighty thousand and the savings applied to the twenty twenty-four tax base.
Any questions on service place? Seeing none, I'll let you open your debate.
The reason for this number is when I asked about the deficit amounts and the projected deficit amounts, staff offered that based on most recent numbers that they could revise the amount of the deficit down by a hundred and eighty thousand by increasing the expected membership revenue and also increasing the amount for rental. So I'm not even asking to reduce it by more than that. We reduced it by three hundred thousand last year from two point four to two point one million. And staff was able to bring it down to one point five million. And they have offered to bring it down to one point eight one, recognizing that there was some staff vacancies that contributed to it. So I'm just in line with what administration thinks they can actually do for a deficit this year. And I'm not asking them to stretch past what they offered. That's it.
Anyone else on debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Motion or most voting is closed and that motion. Motion or most voting is closed and that motion fails with Bromansky, Hughes and Broadhead in favor. 6.7 is to unfund the investment attraction, uh, business case. Counselor Hughes, want to read it in?
I'm just floored right now. So just give me a second. I'm not sure if we're just voting no to everything I say or what. But that was actually offered by administration to decrease those numbers and you guys voted against it. So just give me a second here. Okay? I would like to just not bring forward this one and just table the unfund investment and just go to the next one because it's the one that's.
So when I.
Sorry, sorry. To 6.8.
You're withdrawing 6.7?
No, I'm not withdrawing. I'm just tabling it for now. I'd just like to do 6.8.
Which is 6.8, just to make sure we.
It's also Lakeview.
I know, but let me just read it. So that is postpone motion 24. So, oh, you're postponing it. Okay, that went through. Okay, go ahead.
That the investment attraction and marketing Lakeview Business District business case is postponed to 2025 for consideration after the borrowing by law has been approved.
All right. Any questions on postponing this position or this business case?
I have a question. I have a question.
Yeah.
I'm assuming the boring by law is going to come in 2025. Is that correct? Or was the intention to bring it forward next year?
Yeah, I, I, well, I asked Donnie to confirm, but I believe it was next year was the intention.
In 2024? Can I just remove it to say postpone till after the boring by law has been approved? That the intention is to just do it after the boring by law has been approved? So can we just change those wordings?
Sorry. Yes, we can.
Yeah, I haven't accepted it. So it's all good. Yeah.
Believe that's up on the screen now. Lose 2025.
Will it be, I, we can just leave it to not include a date though, because then there's flexibility. It's going to fail anyway. So, but let's just do it for.
You wanted to say the investment traction, marketing, Lakeview Business District business case is postponed for consideration until after the boring by law has been approved.
Correct. We can remove to 2025. So just remove 2025 to postpone for consideration.
Okay. That your motion you want?
Yes.
Okay. So Counselor McKay, then Counselor Broadhead.
Yeah, thanks. Just in the background or maybe Mr. Erickson or somebody else can answer this. It does say postponing a decision on this business case only delays the organizational uh, capacity, which is likely to result in a delay or loss of industrial development, new business location opportunities. Is, is that quantifiable or is that, how do you, uh, how like, do we know, like, kind of take me through the procurement process or the identification are like for some of these companies, it must, I think they don't make a decision the day of or whatever. They're looking, sometimes they're, you're, some of these, is it safe to assume sometimes these decisions are two, three years before they actually make a move?
Uh, go ahead, Mr. Erickson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher and through the chair to Counselor McKay. Uh, appreciate the question. Um, maybe the best way to answer that would be, um, to provide a real world, uh, local example here without using any names. Um, I can speak to an example of, of, um, one of our, our recent, uh, larger employers that located here. Um, large international company, when they first met with us, um, it was back in October of 2021 and they just opened their facility in a later part of this year. So about two years from initially meeting with our investment attraction team to, um, opening up their location. And then often that process can take longer. In that situation, there, there was a building that was available that required some, uh, some improvements, but there was a, a, a building there. So there is quite a bit of time that's required just for businesses to, um, consider a community that to, to, to locate it. They need to do a lot of, uh, work on their end to, to determine if, if, you know, the, the labors there, if the utilities, if the, the building fits, if the community fits, um, beforehand. And once that decision's made, then there, there, there requires a lot of time for any sort of capital construction that needs to, to occur. So um, often the time can be anywhere from one to, you know, three, four, five years. But in this most recent example, two years.
Thank you. So would this position sort of like be a concierge and for lack of a better term in relation to working with, first of all, getting out there, providing a, uh, this is an opportunity. Have you looked at us? And then maybe as there's more questions, you would actually kind of walk them through and that more than ambassador, almost like I said, a concierge so that you need to be involved right from the get go. And so you couldn't just all of a sudden start up when we said, okay, we're moving forward with this. You're, you're, you're expecting lead time or you're expecting a, a little bit of time before that, just to say, hey, look at us over here.
That, that's correct. They're, they're, the initial phase, um, involves a lot of proactive marketing and targeting of different prospects. And then, uh, as they're interested in the community, you're right. They, they do ask for back as a concierge, taking them through, making sure that they understand certain processes, um, connecting them with, with, you know, key organizations, uh, you know, could be the rail companies, could be the utility corporations, could be landowners, could be landlords, uh, to make sure that they're understanding, um, what would be required to locate here in St. Albert.
And in your presentation, when you were, um, bringing this forward during your, the budget submissions, you don't have the capacity currently within your office to, to do this right now?
We, we believe we're at capacity and we're, we're currently missing out on opportunities.
Thank you.
Counselor Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, through to you, uh, Mr. Erickson. Uh, so what, what really is the trigger that says to the, um, investment community that a parcel of land is, is, uh, available for consideration? Is it, is it a borrowing by law for servicing or is it the something else like the passing of an ASP? I just thought it was the ASP more than a borrowing by law, but.
Through the chair to Counselor Broadhead. I, I wouldn't say there's one single trigger. I would, I would think there would be more akin to gates that you go through and each gate that you pass through. Sends maybe a stronger signal to private sector that the location is shovel ready. So certainly, um, you know, municipal development plan at a very high level, uh, ASP being, being passed can be another indication, um, proximity of servicing, proximity of developments, all of those things can be cues to private sector that, um, you know, the, the opportunity there is, is more tangible.
Yeah, fair enough. Thank you.
All right. Any more questions? Seeing none, I'll accept your motion to postpone. Go ahead.
If you're a business, the one thing you're looking for is certainty. Until there's money behind it, it's been approved, everything is just talk. It can be promotional talk. It can be optimistic talk. But if you're a business that's about to invest 50 or 60 or a hundred million dollars into the community, we are kicking tires until that borrowing by law is approved. And the reality is that we don't even know how much we're going to be borrowing. We don't know if there's going to be pushback from the community. We don't know if there'll be a challenge to the borrowing by law and it can go to a plebiscite that's binding. Any of those things could happen between now and then. The cost of servicing could be substantially larger than we think. The order of which we're servicing could also change. The order of which you're servicing may affect whether or not that land sale even would happen. And none of this is going to be determined until we approve that air structure plan. We had to prove the servicing plan. And then we approve the borrowing by law and agree to go into that level of risk to have this happen. I understand that it will take several years be- between the time that the, that an organization says, yes, we want to build and the time that they actually open their doors. But that clock will not start ticking today. Regardless of what this motion happens, it will start ticking when they actually know that servicing is coming to their site and they know when. And they will not know any of that until the borrowing by law is approved. So if we want to put that money into this, timing is important. And if we want to go through a year, a year and a half of time before the boring by laws approved towards paying someone to market on spec, then we're wasting our money. We need to do it with the timing. I understand people are excited. But the reality is you haven't purchased anything until the borrowing by law is approved. And businesses are not about to put in any money or any commitment on spec. So anything that's coming discussed right now will just simply be that the staff can handle it. Until we actually know how much we're committing, when we're committing it, when the servicing will occur and where it will happen in the order it's going to happen, a business is not going to build here. And that is why I'm saying do it with the boring by less been approved. There's a lot of things that are going to instigate it. But until they know that by certain, everything is just speculation. And we're putting a lot of money into promoting speculation. That's it.
Anyone else on debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that motion fails with Counselor Bromansky and Hughes in favor. So Counselor Hughes, do you want to do, um, PM 23? Which is to unfund the business case?
We'll just pull it.
We'll withdraw.
What's the point?
And then there was another one about halving it. Was that what the?
Yep.
25. Go ahead.
So this community stabilization reserves, the wording is going to change a little bit. Just looking at those guys that the.
What'd you say?
That it's coming out of stabilization so that the bottom, the second half of this should not be in that motion. So it would just simply say that the investment attraction and marketing like few business district business cases reduced by 50% from 452,000 to 226,000 period.
Period. Okay. All right. Any questions on that? Seeing no questions, I'll accept your motion.
The reality is that we did not need $452,000 to accomplish this goal. The reality is also that while we may provide a concierge service, we are not the ones selling this land. It is the developers and the landowners that are selling it, not us. And the reality is that if we actually dated to the time to when it became an impetus, that this was actually going to be happening, we would not need 452. We'd need really half of that. We're robbing this for three years and half of that time is not even going to be a reality of when we're doing this. So my suggestion is you start with 226. And at the end of the 226, if staff can justify increasing it, I'm sure they will come to us and ask us for the 226. So that's what I would suggest as we start and, uh, just use our dollars a bit more frugally on this. Money in does not necessarily mean return out. We need to understand that.
All right. Anyone else on debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Everything okay?
I think we're just waiting for Counselor Jolly's vote.
Uh, I can see it in the chat. It was opposed.
Voting's closed. That motion fails with Counselor Bromansky and Hughes in favor. Uh, postpone motion, 610 is postpone motion 27, the building codes officer position. Counselor Hughes.
Building cone's officer position is changed to a one-year term position with consideration for a permanent position in 2025. The funding source for 77,300 allowing for 12 months of funding in 2024 is transferred to the capital reserve with operating savings used to reduce the 2024 tax base.
All right. Any questions on this one? Seeing no questions, go ahead.
So for this one, I understand what was written in the backgrounder. Staff has also made it pretty clear that one of the challenges that the building officers are having is that the software they're using keeps crashing. It's really probably making it 50% longer for them to approve every single one of their cases. And we are approving them to get a software upgrade. But it's going to take a few months for that software upgrade to take place. And so I can understand that there might be a need for a position until that software is up and running. But there's also a very good chance that once the software is up and running, that the workload can actually still be covered with the current two that we have. So that's why I'm suggesting that before we just jump the gun and just say we automatically need another 1.0 FTE, that we'd say, let's give you a 1.0 for the year. Recognize that it's a limited thing. And then at the end of this year, come back and say, hey, do we still need it or not? Now that you've got the software up and running and you've actually had a chance to see it and have, we see about the efficiencies that it's creating or not creating. So that's what I was suggesting is, um, the, the problem may not be that we need another person. The problem may just be that we need better software. But until the software is installed, that we're going to need another person. That's why I suggested what I did. That's it.
Sorry, I was just reading the backgrounder. Um, anyone else on debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Voting's closed. That motion fails with Counselor Bromansky and Hughes in favor. All right. We'll give you a break, Counselor Hughes. We'll move over to Counselor Bromansky, um, which is operated grant regarding the library. Is, uh, Mr. Bailey still online with us? In case anyone has. He is. All right. We might have questions for you. So I'll get Counselor Bromansky to read it into the record.
Thank you. That the annual operating grant of 4,348,900, sorry, 4,348,900 provided to the library in 2023 be maintained for 2024. Savings to be applied to the 2024 tax base.
Okay. Before I accept that, is there any questions of, uh, either Counselor Bromansky or staff or Mr. Bailey? Wow. No questions. All right. I'll accept your motion. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm, uh, bringing this forward as one of the small hopes in reducing the taxes, um, for this year. Um, we've had many opportunities, um, many that have failed, uh, but, um, we, we got, we have to do something. The, uh, you know, we're the fourth highest, uh, tax rate in the province. According to data that just went out, uh, there's, it's, it's fine to be paying for everything for everyone, but we need to find savings and, um, I believe that the library is a area that again is being funded currently at, uh, 4,348,900. And, uh, the ask is an additional 144,100. Uh, last year administration brought forward to decrease the funding to the library of 500,000 and then that was, um, changed and they actually ended up, um, at the amount they're at now. And I think that, um, uh, a goal, we need a goal in business. You know, the library is a public service, which I appreciate. They do great work for the community. There is, uh, you know, two locations, which again, I get feedback from the community that they're not always happy about that. But again, I appreciate the library and the work they do. But at the same time, to, to provide, you know, it's a business, it's 4 million, uh, four and a half million dollars that we're providing yearly and, uh, the library has to be accountable. Um, for their, you know, their business practices, their spending and giving back to the community at the same time. Um, I think that the amount that's, that's provided to the library currently is, is a huge amount of money compared to, um, you know, other libraries in the region. Um, again, I appreciate the work, but we have, we haven't reached 2019 levels yet. So we keep hearing that, you know, we're, we're adding these programs, we're doing this, but we're, we're going into 2024 and we have not achieved 2019. and we have not achieved two thousand and nineteen usage yet. So, um, I think it's a fair ask to maintain, you know, maintain a sizable budget that was provided last year. And, you know, the hopes for me is to see in the future that we at least accomplish, you know, uh, two thousand nineteen usage, which would be a nice thing to see. And going forward, I, I just, we need to see contributions. The community, the community is struggling right now. So we're trying to provide services for everyone, everywhere. And when you're offering out, you know, four million, five hundred thousand dollars for a service, we have, we have to start counting pennies in that service, you know, we have to be more accountable, more fiscally responsible. Look for the business side of the service that you're providing. So, and I don't think that the, um, you know, what I'm proposing, it's only a hundred and forty-four thousand less of ask, but it will help our tax, uh, a tax base. And again, uh, it would have been more than that. Taken away from the library last year had it not changed. So that's the reason for bringing it forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments on debate?
Um, I, I just, uh, when you do your closing, Counselor Bermansky, at the very beginning of your debate, you said we have the fourth highest according to data recently released. I'd like to know where you're getting that data because I know eight communities that are higher than us already. And they're not even done debating. So when you close, I'd like to just know where you got that data. Edmonton and Calgary are two, right there, seven percent tax increases. And I've got the mid-sized mayors in front of me and there's quite a few. The average of the mid-sized series that was presented to me was five point five six. So we're below average. Um, these are, but these are just proposed. Nothing is, no one's done. Actually, I think Calgary's finished their debate. Yeah, and they're finished. Yeah. And, and while I, I get the heart of your motion, what, what, what? The library for me is the one, there's many, it, but has done a fantastic job dealing with really tight budgets in the last few years. So, um, we were, we reduced their budget during the pandemic. Um, and it has then stayed at that. So a seven percent reduction in twenty, the grant has remained the same in twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. So for four years, they've been working under very tight budgets and, and I think responding to our ask to, to continue to remain tight and efficient. So, um, I think it's, it's time that we actually I, I don't use the word reward, but, um, acknowledge the fact that the library has been operating under very reduced funding. And this further decrease would probably have more job losses and maybe even service cuts. So, um, it's hard to support at this time. Um, so that's my comments on the library, but I wouldn't mind hearing where you got the data for the, for our tax increase. And I think that's it. So I'll let you close.
Thank you through the mirror. Um, I wasn't commenting on percentage tax increase. I was, uh, commenting on the article of how expensive it is to live in St. Albert. Uh, the only
Oh, the, the
Yeah, the only ones higher than us are, are Canmore, Jasper, and
Okay.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Murray. So anyhow, and percentage in tax increase doesn't really mean anything to me because the percentage of a higher amount is
I agree. I agree. Yeah.
Percentages mean nothing. At the, uh, end of the day, the, um, library, uh, although bringing forward tight budgets, um, apparently, we, um, we have, it has been mentioned, they had an audit down in the library a few years ago and there was supposed to be, you know, some changes. Not all of those have been followed through yet. There was, um, a couple of staff losses through attrition, uh, at the library in there that was presented to us as well. So I'm not sure why there's less staff, but then the increase is still over three percent. So again, I, I appreciate the library. I appreciate the work they do. But the fact that they're, they have a budget from the city of four and a half million dollars is gigantic. And, um, it's, it's a small ask to, to just hold, hold, hold the ground, you know, until we get past this. Like we're at five point six, who knows what we're up to now after the last few things that passed here, but, um, um, we need to be fiscally responsible in, in all avenues in the city. We're, you know, we're trying to provide services to people. We're trying to do the best we can in many avenues, but if we just keep spending money on like as if um, we're the owners of the tax dollars, which we aren't. I mean, it's the people's money. And, um, I'm here just trying to save a little bit of that for them where I think there can be efficiencies found. So I hope this is support. I hope the, uh, library, um, you know, feels that, um, they can be somewhat happy, you know, helping us out at this particular time. And again, have that goal of, of the two thousand nineteen usership eventually. And hopefully a stronger business, um, practice, you know, going forward. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Call for the vote. Voting's closed. That motion fails with Counselor Bermansky in favor. Uh, Counselor Hughes, we're over to you with the Violence Prevention Coordinator.
At the Violence Prevention Coordinator positions unfunded as an F T E and remains as a term position with the savings of twenty-five thousand, one hundred applied to reduce the twenty-twenty-five tax base.
All right, before I accept that, is there any questions?
I have a question for them.
Go ahead.
So when I looked at the, uh, business case, it kept saying that this is a casual position. So, and yet it's also saying it's thirty hours a week. So I'm just trying to figure out how you're casually thirty hours a week.
Yeah, I thank you very much, Counselor. I see Connie up on the screen, perhaps Oscar and to comment. Thank you.
Uh, thanks for the question, uh, Counselor. Yes, it is a, it's a casual term position.
And it's, and but they're working thirty hours a week right now?
They do. They work up to thirty hours a week. So thirty would be the maximum in that position that they can work right now.
How many hours are they working on average right now?
On average, close to thirty per week.
Okay. So why are we not just using stop abuse in families to accomplish this goal?
Yeah, so it's different. Um, again, thank you for that question. It's different than the work that SAFE does. Um, where the work that, um, the, this particular Violence Prevention Coordinator does, it's very focused on working directly with men. Um, SAFE Ed is very specifically working in the schools just around um, the prevention of violence for education in the schools. And so it's very, very different in that sense. We not doing that kind of work in the schools, general kind of work. It's really focused on working with men and changing the, the trajectory of how men are thinking and, and operating to, to make a shift in the world, in the world views. So it's very, very different work than SAFE does.
But couldn't SAFE do that work?
Uh, certainly they could. Absolutely they could. Yeah, they've not expressed interest at any point and, um, have not had that SAFE Ed program going now for a few years. And in fact, this year didn't apply for funding for it again. So I'm not sure. I'm not sure why that is. That's something that we'll be, uh, reaching out to SAFE on, but it's not, that program's not operating at all over the last couple of years.
And I'm just, so we're doing this. I'm, I'm just like, this just seems to be something that anyone else but us should be doing, like the, the school system could, should be doing it. Or SAFE should be doing it, but we've somehow assigned this to ourselves. It's not about the nobleness of the cause. It's who's actually responsible for delivering the service. And so I'm, I'm struggling and trying to understand why we would assign this to ourselves when, if we're going into the schools, why is the schools not initiating this program?
Yeah. So that's a piece of the work that we're doing. It's not, uh, solely with the schools. It's working with men in general in groups in the evenings. We're working with community in general um, on weekends in the evenings during the day. So our work isn't, um, in the schools. It's all over the community. So that's, that's a big part of the difference and it is prevention. It's the work that we do. So it, it a hundred percent fits within the mandate of the work that we do. It's true prevention at the core of, of our work.
So how many groups are we serving? Like how many, how many sessions are we providing a week?
It's not like that. So that's what you would, that's what you would look at with the SAFE Ed program is how many sessions are you doing per week? For us, it's not sessions per week. The work happens at menship in the evenings, um, once a month. The work happens doing, uh, general information and awareness to the community through social media, through doing, uh, training to the community through, um, to different organizations. So it's, 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 it's a very general. It's not about how many sessions they're doing in the community. It's about getting the information out to all of the different venues and ways and means that we can. And also trying to bring groups of men together to be more working specifically and directly with men. And that does take a long time to do.
How do you convince the men to join the group?
Yeah, so menship is a, is a group that's been going now for about a year. Um, and the, the incumbent right now in the position attends menship once a month. They meet twice a month and it's, it's just a group of men who've come together because, um, through a survey that we did a couple of years ago, years ago, they identified the need to be able to have a safe place for men, um, to come and talk and, um, deal with mental health and, and, and all of the things that we're trying to do even with this position. So, you know, it's a core group that started a couple of years ago and they're still going and the group is growing. And, um, the more that we can do this, the more men's groups that we'll be able to have, the more people will feel safe to come out, especially men and have these conversations. Um, and then again, uh, that's the true, um, that's true prevention is you got to start with one and it takes a long time. And, and hopefully we'll have more and more and more men's groups, uh, in the region. And I wouldn't be surprised, although I don't have data support to support this, but in the region, um, when I go to my meeting directors and they hear about the work that we're able to do even just with menship, um, they're in awe of us being able to do that because your question is bang on. It's very difficult to get those men out and start to have those conversations. So in, in that sense, it's true prevention. We're going to keep doing it via casual or permanent or whatever, you know, position we have will continue to try to move that needle forward.
So are we only serving one group right now per month or is there multiple groups?
It's not, it's not a group-based work. So he, he does work with the menship group, but he also, like I said, works in schools with, with groups of boys uh, in the community to the general public. So it's, it's not a numbers position. It's not about, it, it's not like that. So it's doing work all the time through education. It's going in and doing a wise guys program in the schools with a group of grade six boys. Um, it's, it's a really varied approach to try to get the messaging out and get more young boys and young more men to start having the conversation.
So what I don't understand is why we need to make this into an F T E? Because it doesn't seem like the system currently is broken. It seems that the person who's providing this is doing a good job. Um, they're working thirty hours a week. They're able to get some success. Why do we have to spend another twenty-five thousand dollars to accomplish what sounds like we'll have the same end result?
Yeah. So thank you for that question. Um, and it's a great question. We're going to continue to do the work. Um, there's always a risk when you have a casual or a temporary position of losing them. Um, and that always puts you backwards and, and that's a risk in a permanent as well. I understand that. Um, but you don't get the full benefits of an employee in a casual or a term position. And so you're at higher risk of losing the incumbent. Uh, but we will continue to do the work at, like I said, a casual, temporary or a permanent position. So you're absolutely right.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Right. Any, many more questions? All right, I see none. I'll accept your motion. Go ahead.
Thank you. I think that, um, this conversation that we just had would explain why we don't need to spend twenty-five thousand dollars to achieve the same goal. I'm all in favor of violence, domestic violence prevention. We would continue to provide that regardless if this motion passes. We just simply would not be paying an extra twenty-five thousand dollars in benefits for it. Um, I think that the person, it sounds that the person who's doing this is a very dedicated individual to accomplishing this. And I think it's, uh, I, if I, it sounds like it's really a passion of that person, uh, which is great. But if we're accomplishing the goal through a term, if we're accomplishing it through the, the casual, then we can still accomplish and actually achieve the same goals in the end without putting twenty-five thousand dollars extra into this. That's it. Thanks.
Counselor McKay?
I had significant involvement in a previous career around domestic violence. I was one of the very first domestic violence detectives to work with a community social worker in Edmonton, starting in nineteen ninety-one, ending uh, shortly before my career ended, retired, to make it sound like I ended it. Um, I can tell you why, uh, this is important. It's all about trust. You talked about in the questions around, um, why, why would men be involved? How would we get men involved? Well, uh, one of the, I've been over probably in over my two thousand files that I had in this, um, I had all sorts of men approach me, but at the same time, there was this massive stigma around men and, and their perception that if, uh, there seemed to be weak or if there's a perception that, um, they're not the main providers, that they should, they should actually, uh, you know, you know, sorry for the quotes, air quotes, but suck it up, be a man. And, um, when you have the opportunity to break that cycle, you grab it. And so for this program to be so successful, and if it is because of the individual, um, one of the biggest things that you could break is trust. And if, so hard, if, if you're trying to get a, if you're trying to get somebody in to get help, that's the first step. Then there's weeks and weeks of trying to break down that cycle, trying to break into what's happening in, in that person. How do you, how do you determine whether or not there's resources? And if honestly, if you can break the cycle of violence, um, yeah, even in one case, you're a success. But one of the biggest challenges is trust. And what we saw when these programs and they're offered through all the municipalities, uh, because they're S C S S and they're offered in, uh, private, but the lack of funding and then men get into these programs and then they lose their funding and then they're left alone. And so they revert back into previous behavior. So that is a real risk. If we were to lose this position, um, and he does sound like a very motivated, very passionate individual, but if we lost him, you would potentially lose the trust of that menship group. And it would be, it would be, it'd be irretrievable. So I can tell you from all sorts of experiences, if you can, if you can get an offender into a program that breaks the cycle, you've got, you're, uh, a long way down to preventing not only more, like not only more domestic violence, potentially much more hazardous and potentially homicides. So, and, and, and minimal family breakup. So congratulations, Connie. That's, um, uh, fantastic. And I would, I would, I know you mean to keep on going, but the problem would be is if we lost an individual to try to get somebody back, trying to get in somebody new train, you would, you just, you would just be so far back. You would be stuck in neutral for so many, if not reverse, for such a long time. Anyways, I, I would, I'm, I'm voting against this because I've seen this work. I've been involved in this work. I'm passionate about this work.
Counselor Jolly?
Thank you. Um, so Counselor McKay, I, I absolutely agree with your comments. Um, I would also add, um, that as an employer, I think it's also important to, um, acknowledge the contribution that our employees are, are making, um, through making permanent positions permanent. Um, years ago, more than twenty years ago, I worked for the city of St. Albert, uh, working full-time, so forty hours a week for multiple years. Um, uh, as a casual employee. And, you know, I remember once, um, you know, asking, the city of St. Albert had a, had a vaccine program, a flu shot program back when you had to pay for flu shots. And they said, hey, if you want a flu shot, give us a shout. And so I gave him a shout, you know, I, I would like a flu shot. And what HR told me at that time was, we don't care if you're not sick because it doesn't cost us anything. So I was not eligible for that program. Since then, um, two things have happened. One, City of St. Albert HR doesn't do that anymore. That was, you know, more than twenty years ago. Um, also they don't, uh, they've, they've made more permanent positions for people who are working in permanent roles. Um, and, and what that experience with the city of St. Albert taught me is to never work for an employer that thinks so little of their employees that they would just is to never work for an employer that thinks so little of their employees that they would just keep on a, a casual contract forever. So um I'm, I'm opposed to this motion and, and the ones following it. Um because I want to show our employees that they are valued, um that we're not going to take advantage of them just because we can. Um and um that's it. Thank you.
See no more speakers. Counselor Houston Close?
This is not about whether or not I like the individual or what the person's doing or anything else or about the program. It's just about a cost efficiencies and whether or not this is necessary. And I, what I'm really hoping is that I, we didn't hear from anybody in, who's working in the position saying, if I'm done full time, I'm leaving. So I really don't want to be blackmailed into a position. But I, I think that the person would continue in the position. And uh I'm looking forward to having that same level of passion when we have other discussions about transit in the future. Thank you.
Uh call for the vote. Voting's closed. That motion fails with Counsel Bramanski and Hughes in favor. So according to my math, shortly after five, we have one, two, three, four, five, six council motions left. I think we should power through. I think we can get this done tonight, guys. So that would be like a little under ten minutes per motion, I think. Let's do it. So Counsel Hughes, the municipal land specialist position. PM thirty.
Before I bring it forward, can I just ask a couple of questions?
Yeah.
Just maybe I won't bring it forward. So the um, this is Adrian, right?
Um what's the question, maybe?
Yeah, I'm just to whoever I need to ask. Oh, maybe you, Donnie. You're the one popping up. So it says in the background that we can't do it with a point five FTE. And I'm trying to figure out why. So can you let me, can you just shed light on that?
Few reason. Um um great, great question. You know, could we do half? Um the capacity and the amount of work that we see today, that's been split amongst our staff that we come across to do the land uh associated files, it can easily cover one FT at moment. Uh another reason why we can't have, like we've looked into other land related positions, we, with a casual position or half FTE. It's hard to keep anyone uh get hired to begin with. That's the struggle that we have been through. And then the third one is land related files deals with a lot of confidentiality. The, the type of individuals that could apply to this position likely would have, would be, would have worked in a legal office or would be working half the other half in a legal office or land related matters. So there's a sense of confidentiality that comes into play as well. So those are kind of the high level update. And I have Tanya on board as well. If she wants to add anything to the list that I gave, please, please feel free to add Tanya.
Um I think, you know, Donnie pretty much touched on everything. Our biggest thing is, again, we're having capacity and we've been trying to fill a term position in another land position, which um we've not been able to fill that one yet right now. And that's within almost an eighteen month term.
Sorry, so you had an eighteen month term position that you're not, you can't fill? Is that what you just said?
A land administrative position that we're running currently. Again, we were unsuccessful. It's, it's tough. Um it's a, you have to have some pretty specialized knowledge for some of this stuff. And there's, you know, a lot of competition. There's not a lot of people who do it or they work private industry. So trying to find that person with the right balance of skills and knowledge and uh, you know, we'd say business and uh land acumen, it's, it can be challenging. I think it would be tough to find somebody on a part-time position.
So just help me understand, just so I, so I, I can just withdraw the motion. They're all going to vote against it anyways. There's no point in arguing it for nothing. Um so the one thing I'm trying to understand, Tanya, is I can see us needing to purchase land for Fowler, for example. But I'm not seeing where else we're going to have imminent land purchases. So is, what is, what else is the position doing other than negotiating the land purchases?
Now, let's be looking at sort of like our land from an asset management standpoint. So um some of the things that we, you know, um I'll, I'll use the fire hall of land as an example. So there was, we bought the land for the fire hall, but then there was a bunch of different, um I will say departments with different land needs, making sure so that, and then trying to find a way to balance everybody's needs on one parcel of like six point six hectares of land. Um so we want to make sure that the land that we're buying meets our needs, can maximize our needs as well. So that we, um I think what happens now is we have a little bit of a siloed approach. So some of the people that might have a need aren't in the room because it's a specific project based item. So if we have a, I would say uh collaborative, um or collaborative approach, we'll know what everything's needed. We'll be able to look at the assets we have. Are we using them to their maximum potential? Um we also don't have anybody that looks after our um specific, all our licenses and leases and things like that. So a lot of the times we miss a little bit of revenue opportunities because we might have a license for, which is more like a permit. But we need somebody to remember, oh, we need to collect that money and things like that. So if the licensee isn't uh proactive, we might, you know, miss out or something will expire and we've missed that opportunity to collect money. Um that type, so.
Okay, it's okay. You don't have to, it's not going to be an exam on this. I'm just trying to get an idea. So this is helpful. Thank you for that. So I, so what I'm hearing is just that we actually need a full-time position because we just won't be able to get somebody if we don't. I still don't see the full-time hours there, but what I'm hearing is that if we don't do a full-time position, we're just going to have nobody. Um so I'm not going to ask you to comment on the hours because we've already had that discussion. But what, that's basically what you're telling me is if we don't go for a full-time, it's kind of like an all or nothing. We can't buy part of our human being. Is that what I'm hearing?
Um not a qualified one. And I think that we, we do have more than enough work. Um to be honest, I wrote a white paper about this in twenty thirteen about ways that we could find efficiencies and generate income. And we've just been kind of, I won't say bandaging it along the way, but it's just the people that do things or have other jobs to do. I do a lot of the land administration stuff in the city. I do a lot of the utility right of way negotiations, but also manage the offsite levy program. I do all the subdivision conditions and endorsements. And I'm just, I'm running out of like abilities and I can't do all the jobs. So this is a way that we need to kind of, we need an extra body to help.
Okay, you know, I'll just withdraw the motion.
All right, then we're moving on to Counsel Bramanski's motion on P, so six fourteen, which is PM thirty one, legal ledge records position. Want to read it in?
Um I do not. Yeah, can I amend it?
Sure, yeah.
I will amend it uh saying that the legal legislative and record services position be unfunded and savings of thirty thousand is applied to the twenty twenty four tax base.
Is it thirty thousand?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'm looking at a different one. Okay.
And just to keep it in line for um the backgrounder, you know, in the policy discrepancies. So uh to keep it less complicated, I'll just put it forward as unfunded.
Okay, so for accepted, is there any questions on that?
Uh I do have one question for administration. If you could clarify again what this position is for again, since it's not in this backgrounder.
So Counsel Bramanski, that was a position um to use funds to be able to retain external counsel for legal services work. It was for a solicitor position that um didn't quite make the priority cut. So it was unfunded, but we were able to ask for a bit of money. So it'd be thirty thousand for essentially legal, external legal counsel.
How much was the original ask, please?
Uh the original ask was for a full FTE for a new solicitor.
Okay. And um I just have another question for legal legislative. Like lately, there's been a lot of, you know, policy work, like redoing this, you know, updating this. A lot of those things brought forward. Is that pulling from your time quite a bit that pushes for a need of this external work?
Uh yeah, all of those kinds of um questions related to policy amendments or administrative directive amendments, they do end up going through legal services for review. So yes, it does add to our workload.
Okay, but if there, you don't just do any of those, you know, to update or whatever normally?
So the red, so legislative services, not legal services, but we're all part of the same department. So in our department, we do keep track and keep a register of all of the policies and administrative directives. And we track when they should be updated and then what priority they should be updated. But we do um work with the other departments who are the subject matter experts on the content of the policies and the administrative directives to actually do the updates and we kind of help facilitate the process along.
Okay, and you're pretty much through all the policy updates now, right?
It's a, it's a cycle, so we're not done. It's a constant cycle of work. We're actually a little bit behind. Um because that work kind of was low priority during the last few years. So we have a bit of them stacked up to work through.
Okay. And if you, um so you just have a little bit of delay in time if this wasn't approved then?
I think if this wasn't approved, um it would, it would be a matter of starting to kind of um triage the work that comes through legal and anything that's kind of deemed lower risk might just not have a legal set of eyes on it. Um because we have a capacity problem already. So this was kind of an attempt to alleviate some of that work that can be kind of parsed off and sent off to external legal counsel and not take up um as much of our internal time.
Okay, can you describe what the external would be? Like how you'd find that person?
So in the municipal legal community, there are, like it's a small bar. So we, I, I would know which law firms and lawyers to reach out to for different things. So I would retain them um as, as I deemed necessary if I, if the funds were approved.
Okay, and are external rates higher than if you were just doing it internally?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that's all my questions. Thank you.
All right, any more questions? All right, seeing none, I'll accept your motion. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'd just like to see um this unfunded to again, help with the tax base just a little bit. And um again, I've put many motion for, motions forward on uh, you know, hiring outside of the agency, like external. Um I guess people to do jobs that the city should be doing. And um at this point in time, I would think that um, you know, we'd be able to have a handle on it, probably not asking for as many policy changes and focusing on policy changes. So um it seems like a, the twenty, the thirty thousand of external dollars, I would like to see rather, you know, staying with the city than hiring out a consultant again or consultant law firms that uh again, will be more expensive than work done internally. And that's it. Keep it simple.
Okay, any more comments on debate? See now I'll call for the vote. Voting's closed. That motion fails with Counsel Bramanski and Counselor Hughes in favor. Uh IT investment fund.
I'll withdraw that one.
Withdraw? Uh Counsel Hughes, post motion thirty three, which is the HRIS integration analyst.
I had a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Uh okay. So the question I had was when we purchased this software, weren't we given, wasn't it included in the contract that we'd actually have training provided for this, Ryan? I'm just, I'm, as time, I would have asked more uh BIRs, but we were uh cut short a week ago. So now it had to become a motion to have a further discussion about this. So um I would have been happy to keep it as BIRs. So I'm just trying to figure out that we, we paid several hundred thousand dollars, I'm guessing, for software. And then we didn't, didn't include training or help me understand this?
So this is one of the, the frustrations that we've encountered with um the implementation is that we were provided base level system training, but no ongoing training, amendment training, new module training or training for staff. And that's all things that we've had to take on.
So I guess why, like it wasn't, someone's got to tell me, like we, we did this and we didn't include those as requirements in our procurement process?
My understanding and if, I'd have pulled up the contract, but it was our integrator's perspective that they met the training requirements. They met the requirement by providing us with the information on the system for us to then deliver to staff. So we, we, we end up with the capacity hit after they've turned it over with a base level of understanding.
So let me just make sure I understand this. So we purchased it. They provided like just base stuff. And then everything else beyond like the basics, we were on our own. And their contract never included actually allowing us to learn how to use the software correctly in its entirety.
So, so I want to draw a distinction here. There, there's certain pieces of technical um SQL report writing that our, our people do not have. And this analyst would, would address that. So I want to draw that distinction. But everything else, maintenance from go live on is, is us for training.
Okay, and then it says that you think you need two years full time just to ensure sustainable base operation. And I'm trying to also just wrap my head around that because I, okay, because if I had to learn Photoshop, which is extremely high level, complicated, powerful program, it would not take two years full time for me to understand this. So I'm trying to understand why it would take us two years to uh ensure a sustainable base operation on this program.
You betcha. So the, the backgrounder that I kind of tried to explain, but maybe I wasn't clear, is we accepted a considerable amount of risk with go live on things that were important in, in our system. Um but we had no, no timeline. We had no runway to, to complete before um our legacy systems expiry. Uh actually, we'd already ran over on our legacy systems expiry and we're paying a considerable premium to have two licenses, two systems in parallel. So this deferral of not required but extremely important items are what we need to play catch up on now. And uh I mean, it doesn't matter in terms of the volume, but the JIRA system that we have is about two years of backlog and we're running a uh version that is from twenty nineteen that we need to upgrade. So like these, these are the things that just compile on top of each other.
So Ryan, so just so I understand, um because this is one of my concerns. So I might as well just, you know, it doesn't matter if being the motion for it, it's going to fail. So, but I just want to understand for my, my peace of mind here, okay? Um is that if, if a software is four years old, it's typically out of date. So if it's already two years old plus, and then it's going to take us two years to catch up. By the time we catch up, we're on lap two and now we got to put a whole new software system in. So like, I, I'm just not sure.
The, 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 the distinction I'd make, so think of your, your iPhone. You, you have an operating system and you're going to update your version so often. Well, we need to go from the twenty nineteen version to the twenty twenty three version. And then every couple of years thereafter is going to be a version upgrade. So, so that sustainment is part of the HRS analyst work. That is separate and in addition to catching up on making reports that we need that don't exist, addressing accrual issues that we've been doing manual workarounds. All these operating things that we've deferred to make go live happen that weren't a requirement but are extremely impacting our, our capacity.
Okay, and how difficult is it going to be to find somebody to fill this position? Because I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm assuming there's not a lot of people that understand the software on the ins and outs, right?
I'm very concerned.
You are concerned about how to do this?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would be too.
So even with the FTE, I mean, Joanne and I've had some conversations that, well, we'll go to market and we'll, we'll try to fill it, but I, I, I'm optimistic but concerned.
Like what happens if you can't fill it? Like let's, let's just assume this motion isn't here. Let's assume you have the one point O. How on earth are we going to handle this software if we can't actually have somebody fill it?
So there are contractors at an extreme price. I, I noted that out there. I, I really hope that we can get an analyst in-house that is that we can get an analyst in-house that is becomes our SME and and uh does everything that we wish and dream for, um but contractor is our our backup plan at an extreme premium.
Okay. Well, we got ourselves a problem here. I'm looking to Mr. Fletcher. Going forward, I'm going to assume that we're going to have in the procurement process a greater level of training, except regardless if we need somebody or not. We'll have a greater level of training written into the RFPs hopefully for a standard for follow-up.
Well, I would actually, yes, is the short term. Um you know, I I think this was deliberate. I might ask Joanne um to chime in very quickly uh to provide, you know, I think the assurances you're looking for, right, from future?
Certainly. Thank you that for that question, um Counselor Hughes. So yes, we have been looking at our capital charters and at our procurement process to ensure that we are having individuals um in place as part of the projects for knowledge transfer and to ultimately take over that application management component. One of the uh myths, if you will, is that if you have a piece of software that is software as a service or in the cloud, that you do not need to have any resources within your organization. That is simply not true. These resources, such as the analysts that Ryan is requesting, they are there to ensure that we are getting optimal use out of each piece of software, and as you described, to ensure that that software doesn't age out, that we're keeping up with upgrades, that we're keeping up with different features that can keep it alive and to extend the life of that software. And so that in that practice has been incorporated. What you will see, and I'll use the uh enterprise maintenance management, asset management as an example. We have currently term positions and we are going to be looking at putting forward in subsequent years to have those transferred to FTE. But we are taking that into account so that we don't find ourselves in the situation with any of our newer systems that we're purchasing.
Okay, I just I just really, I'm hoping that when we do any more RFPs for new software, that we really stress getting the full training, regardless if we need somebody on staff to handle it. That person is ready to go and that we're not or months behind the ball trying to play catch up and hoping that we can find somebody. Um, because I just I just think of like, if these guys can put out the software, they should be able to train us on how to use it. Otherwise, you're basically giving me a gift that I can't use. You know, and and that's not helpful and we're paying so much money for this. So I'm just hoping that going forward, we really tighten up that RFP so that they are bound to make sure that we can take that ball and roll with it and that we don't end up just getting something that we don't know how to use. And so um I'll just withdraw the motion. I want to thank you, Ryan. I think that you have had to answer the questions on this one about two billion times so far. Um, so thank you for your patience with it, but I there were just some lingering questions that I had and I didn't have another opportunity to address them. So thank you for that.
Did I hear you right, Counselor Hughes? You're withdrawing?
Yes, and I'm going to withdraw the IT application one because
Sorry, let me, are you withdrawing PM thirty-three?
Thirty-three and thirty-fourth.
Okay.
I saw it was my motion for emergency. Yes, I know you guys straight my face. I'm not about to keep argue that one after after the radio thing, so I'm not voting for that one. So I only have the emergency vehicle position left.
And that is the next one, so go ahead.
I do have some questions about that. We have no backgrounder on this, so just give me a second, please. So we are currently, my understanding is that for the emergency vehicles, we are currently contracting that out to a commercial entity to handle the maintenance of it. How much money are we currently putting towards that through a third party?
Thank you, Counselor. I'll ask Louise uh to initially comment, and I know I think probably ever it would be online if there's any specifics related to fire apparatus.
Uh, thank you for the question, Counselor Hughes. Uh, this year so far, we are about a hundred and ten thousand uh for twenty twenty-three, ninety-nine of that is fire trucks and about twelve of that is ambulances. And then it is variable in previous years, uh prior to that as low as forty-four thousand back in two thousand and eighteen.
Okay, so our lowest was that, but our and our highs obviously pretty good. Um, what's been the average? What's the reasonable expectation?
The it's hard to say what an average is. The average of contracted services is probably in the neighborhood of about looking at it quick, about two hundred and fifty thousand a year, which is variable and and is not just uh emergency services vehicles, the contracted services are used for all our vehicle types, depending on the need and the priority of the vehicle that needs to be serviced.
So how much would it be just for emergency services for contracted? Do we know that on average-ish? Because I knew you're saying a hundred and ten, but wait, I don't know what is it, what's so, I guess here's my question. How much are we budgeting for it? So uh because how much we spend is one thing, but we have our budget. So how much are we budgeting for fire truck and ambulance maintenance on an annual basis to outsource it?
So we we budget on on average and it and that's variable as well, eh anywhere between two hundred and ten and I think as high as about three hundred.
And that's just for ambulance and fire?
No, this is for all our contracted services and so the EVT and specifically the uh emergency vehicle technician could work on vehicles depending on what the need is. Um, if we had an EVT certified mechanic in our shop. There are certain things that they will not be able to do in-house, um such as the x-rays of the aerial lift to to uh confirm that that the apparatus is in working order. We don't have that type of equipment. Um, the actual chassis of any emergency vehicle is just your standard heavy-duty technician. Where the EVT certification becomes important are for those additional emergency elements, only they can work on them. And there's a variety of levels of EVT technician that you can achieve. We uh have had EVTs in the past. We have certainly offered the EVT certification to any heavy-duty mechanic that we have working right now. We've had a couple try and they have been unsuccessful. Which is why so some of that work right now needs to be contracted out. Internally, our our heavy-duty mechanics can handle the chassis and the engine work. But the specifics uh of the emergency apparatus, that does get contracted out.
So so if we were to specifically hire somebody for uh EMT uh maintenance and then just take it off of the amount we have budgeted, I like it almost sounds to me like it would be an even Steven if we were to do it, because it is quite expensive to pay for. I realize that some stuff has to be commercial commercialized out, but it sounds like if we were to hire specifically for that position. And I believe we could train somebody to do it as well, and then we could hire somebody to fill that position as well. But it it sounds like we could actually just break even if we were to do it in-house. Is that, am I hearing you correctly?
Um, I wouldn't go that far. So the the EVT, we actually put that as part of our postings. The problem is right now we're in a bit of a boom. Um, and so we have a lot of EVT certified heavy-duty mechanics are going up north. When we're in a bust, they it's no problem to get them. Our postings right now have it on it. And I said it's available to any HDT that we already currently have. So actually getting it is difficult. Um, I to say that we were actually going to hire for one, I'd love to say we could get one. There's no guarantee that we would actually get someone with that certification. And we do have interest in-house. It's just it hasn't been successful at that this time. In regards to what we contract out, it's variable. In some years it's more and in some years it's less. It depends what our service levels are. We have refuse trucks that go out because they need to meet service levels. And if our mechanics are all tied up, they're going to contract. Plow trucks in the winter are going to take priority. Emergency services will always take priority, but it depends what their needs are. In the future, what our intent is, and and there was always an intent to try and hire somebody with their EVT and have it maintained. And then to have them have a service vehicle so that they could actually do this maintenance at the fire halls themselves. And that was tied to Fire Hall Four. On once that came online with their equipment, we could have the mechanic actually rotate around and do a significant portion of that work there, which actually saves emergency services from bringing the vehicles to us.
Okay, so Louise, it's a long night. So I'm what I'm trying to figure out here is like I am, there's obviously a need for this emergency vehicle maintenance to have somebody on staff because it would allow us to do it in a more timely fashion and potentially for a lot less money. But and I understand you're saying it's offered out to anybody and you know, for whatever reason, um they've been unsuccessful so far. I'm not sure how to solve this problem, uh other than like simply saying, what if we gave you another mechanic? But then I don't know how much of that would be offset with, like if we said another mechanic, I realize you're saying you're hiring them all for emergency vehicle as well. So I'm I'm trying to think like, how do you solve the problem? You're hiring for that. I don't know if they think that like, if they feel they're overworked and then that we just can't get them? Or is it because everyone's going to afford Mac because it's getting paid double the amount? Or or what, to try to address the fact that we're paying for something offsite when we ideally would not be. This is, I don't often argue to get new positions. This is like a rarity that you'll ever see me argue for this. But I'm I'm thinking that it's, it would save us money if we could get that position filled or get another position again for that. Or or am I just like out to lunch right now? And I could be. Um, and we just should just go with what we've got. But I just feel like what we've got isn't addressing the problem. Which is that we don't have somebody in the emergency vehicle maintenance area and um to to address the fire trucks and the ambulances. And it's not from a lack of intent from you. It's just that we don't have it. So I don't know at this point how to solve that problem.
Is this something, Mr. Fletcher, that you've identified as a problem that needs to be solved? Like I didn't see any business cases for this.
Well, it didn't because a- again, you know, the the ideal is that all our postings include this, right?
Okay.
So you you know, I just say more broadly, some of the other challenges are related to infrastructure, space and equipment, as was noted. The EVT can only work to to the level they're trained to and 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 with the equipment they've got. This is absolutely a desirable thing, like there's no doubt about it. I I can't put my hand on my heart that say that it would be totally offset um by um a decrease in contracted services, because if you've heard that that ebbs and flows um based on requirements. Um, and and so we we'd keep working this. I think, you know, I don't want to put words in in Louise's mouth, um but you know, what another heavy-duty mechanic position FTE that ideally would have the EVT um formulation, you know, would that be useful based on our current infrastructure and team rates? I guess fundamentally, there's a question that that we can answer, right? And and um because because there's no doubt this would be useful.
And just to add, we we do actually currently have a vacancy right now that we're trying to fill. Um, we have one mechanic on leave that depending on on if he returns, would create another one. And then we have another vacancy beginning January first. All those will go up with their EVT certification as a requirement or as at very least an asset. Uh, and then i- it's the cost to maintain that certification uh aren't expensive to the city, but it requires the person to actually write the exam and and continue on and build their levels every year. So they they actually have to have a a passion for that kind of work. And we've had some in the past and we lost them to up north and our current complement, there's some interest expressed there. The ones that have tried so far haven't been successful, not saying they won't try again.
Okay, so do do you want me just to withdraw the motions what I'm asking or you want me to argue for it? It'll be one of the few that I might get a yes on in the entire planet, but right now um I don't, I'm willing to just say no if and and have a further discussion if you think that we need to have it in January. But what I would, I I just, because you're you're, it's not that you're not trying. It's just that we're just not successful in trying to achieve this, solve this problem.
Appreciate it. My recommendation would be to withdraw this at this time, and we revisit it as part of a holistic look going forward. Would be the right, which I I realize sounds ridiculous, saying I recommend withdraw an FTE. Um, that's been freely offered, but in this instance, you know, we're working on just trying to hire initial complement and um I can't guarantee you that we would be able to offset the cost.
Do we think that we need another person in the maintenance department, though? I'm looking at you, Louise, right now, because I like, do we do we need them? Because I feel like, you know, you haven't asked for any new people in that area for a very long time. I know you've got a couple that you came in on and I didn't question them. Or do you think that if we just got the new guys and we have fill the other positions that we're good? I mean, we have the additional problem that we, I mean
Mayor Point of Order, I think the CIA has already answered this question.
I I might, I want to hear what Louise has to say. I just, I did, I just well, you you're employees, Mr. Fletcher, not Louise, so
I I'm happy to let Louise answer the question, but my answer was based on a note that I got from her.
Okay.
Uh, and so in Counselor Hughes, I can, so even if this was to go forward, I still have two postings I'm trying to fill and we're having a little difficulty right now. Um, there are business cases coming forward. There's one additional mechanic tied to the uh public works expansion. And then you will see a business case come forward for a heavy-duty mechanic with EVT and a service vehicle once Fire Hall Four gets operational with all its trucks so that we can service that. So that's coming in the future. It's just I don't have a timeline for that yet.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you for that, because we didn't have a backgrounder, and so that's why I yeah, I had a few more questions. I'm just trying to wrap my head around it. So we'll just draw the motion. But I I would like to get updates about like in the, like, whatever, we actually do fill this position or where we're getting close to filling it, I think that it would be good to know that that it's happened. I guess is what I would love to see. That's it. Thank you.
Are you guys ready for the omnibus? Oh, look at how fast you're going. Put it up and I'll read it in. Like there's no numbers we need to adjust. Okay, so I'll just read it and as it's okay. That administration just proposed uh twenty-four municipal utility operating and capital budgets based on all, I like that, late breaking changes. Or discover discrepancies, including the following, that the library be funded in the amount of four million, four hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. Uh, that the Arts and Heritage Foundation be funded in the amount of one million, eight hundred and twenty-dollar, twenty-eight and six hundred dollars. And that the two thousand and twenty-four utility revenue and expense budget be increased by six hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred dollars to reflect the updated wastewater changes from area utilities. And I have nothing to add. We'll get there, yeah. So it is, anyone have any comments on this one? Call for the vote. Voting's closed. That passes by majority with Council Berman ski opposed. And then before I complete, um I had asked uh Diane and and Bill to represent the tax increase as a a dollar figure for the average family home in St. Albert, because as Counselor Berman ski said, percents don't mean anything. So do we have that number? It was two hundred and twenty-six dollars per household when we started deliberations?
I'll share my screen, but we're uh basically at two hundred and twenty-six dollars per average five hundred thousand now.
So
So effectively unchanged um for the the household, yeah.
Okay. Two hundred and twenty-six for the average house. Okay, and I actually, I am collecting data council to get that number from other communities, so we can say I don't have a a little bit better comparison. But of course, every community has a different average price house in Kenmore. It's eight hundred thousand for an average home. Crazy. And then there is a motion to complete the budget deliberations. Um, so anyone want to read that one in? Go ahead, Counsel Broadhead. Pardon? There you go, yeah.
That administration prepare the twenty twenty-four proposed municipal
Oh, I do move out a committee of the whole first.
Oh. Move out a camera.
No, move out a committee of the whole. We're reading.
That council move out a committee of the whole.
And then you can read the whole, read the whole thing.
All right.
And that they prepare the budget.
That administration prepare the twenty twenty-four uh proposed municipal and utility operating budgets. The proposed municipal and utility capital budgets and any associated bylaws in accordance with the direction provided in the November-December committee, the whole deliberations and previous repair, maintenance and replacement RMR decisions and fees and charges decisions all for consideration by council on December the nineteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Any comments, Counsel Broadhead?
Pretty straightforward, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Oh, Counsel Hughes?
Yeah, I'll be voting against this. We could have had a much better budget. We could have reduced the taxes a lot more than what we did. Even the service place deficit. And my mind has been blown today. This was a disappointing budget, to put it mildly, in the in the past eleven budgets.
And my mind has been blown today. This was a disappointing budget, to put it mildly. In the, in the past eleven budgets I've done, this was absolutely the worst one I've done. I can't support it.
You're allowed to do that. Um, no one else? Call for the vote. Voting's closed. It is closed, yes. And that motion passes with Counsel Vermentsky and Hughes opposed. All right, I got to say, council, it's quarter to six. I'm, I'm impressed with how efficiently we ran that one. Um, thank you for your support on that. And we will see you, well, I'll see you before December nineteenth, but we will. Finalize this in December. Meeting adjourned, sorry.